This meeting going, if everybody can please find their seats. Good evening, the City of Castle Hill City Council will convene into a regular meeting on August 13th, 2019 at 6:30 PM in the council chambers located at 209 Lemonwood Drive, Castle Hills, Texas. I'm going to call the meeting to order, determine if a quorum is present. It appears that a quorum is present. We'll start off with the invocation. Do we have Mr. Pinkston?
Well, let's pray together. Heavenly Father, we just come into you tonight on behalf of our beloved city and I just pray that tonight you would really pull us together and just help us to pull our community together. Just, just give us eyes to see what we need to see, just a mind to know what we need to know, and the will to do what we need to do to take care of the business of this city and all the citizens who are represented here tonight. This council and mayor got a raised up to help us and to do the right and to bridge the gap, to lead and to bring us together, and I pray that would just come to pass, come together in this meeting tonight. So, lead us, just guide us. In short, bless Castle Hills, the city we love so much, the place we love, in Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you, Mr. Pinkston. Next, we have a pledge of allegiance. How about our favorite Public Works Director, Mr. Harada? Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I move to change the orders of the day and move to item 14, and I have a motion.
(Inaudible).
Give me one second, Ms. Winger, we have a point of order from Mr. McCormick. Mr. McCormick, go ahead.
I'd like to get some clarification. Question for Mr. Schnall.
I would not like to get some clarification.
Ms. Winger.
I didn't ask you, Ms. Winger.
Mr. McCormick is talking.
I have a motion.
Mr. McCormick, please proceed.
Mr. Schnall, I notice that Ms. McLean and I are both seated tonight, and I recall us discussing in the past a certain article of the Texas Constitution, Article Number 16, Section 17, which requires, as I read it, elected officials to hold over in position until their successors are qualified. And I presume that's the reason Ms. McLean is seated tonight, and I'd like to confirm that was your opinion, is that correct?
Mr. McCormick, my opinion is that Section 17 of Article 16 of the Texas Constitution reads as follows. Except as provided by subsection B of this section, all officers of this state shall continue to perform the duties of their offices until their successors shall be duly qualified. The exception does not apply, in my opinion. Therefore, my opinion is that you stated the statutory, excuse me, the constitutional provision correctly.
And that also applies to me, as I understand it, notwithstanding my previous resignation.
Yes, sir. There is, in my opinion, sufficient authority for you to serve as the holdover to Place One at this time.
Thank you.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion now.
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Winger.
I move to declare that City Council Place Three... What is that noise?
It's an Amber Alert. Please continue.
Has, has... I move to declare that City Council Place Three has never been vacated and that Sylvia Gonzalez is and has always been qualified to hold her elective office of Alderman Place Three, Castle Hill City Council. That is in line with the law, and I'll be happy to read it because it is up to City Council and not up to the city attorney who inappropriately removed Sylvia Gonzalez. It is up to the council to decide.
Okay.
I second that motion.
Okay. We have a first by Ms. Winger, a second by Mr. Sanderson.
And I have an objection.
Mr. McCormick, your objection, yes, sir.
I object to the motion as improper because the statute is quite clear that requirement to take the, take the position of Alderman includes the requirement to have taken an official oath and sign an official oath within 30 days of the date of the election, which did not happen. Therefore, notwithstanding the, the vote that might be taken by council, the council has no authority to amend the state law or to declare that the state law is invalid or inapplicable in any case.
This, then, you're wrong.
And the opinion of the, excuse me, I'm not finished.
Mr. McCormick, please proceed.
I think the opinion of Mr. Schnall as the, as the duly selected city attorney is the one that the city is bound to accept and abide by until there is a court ruling to the contrary, and so I object to taking a vote or a consideration of this motion.
Thank you, Mr. McCormick.
Mr. Schnall has been wrong.
Ms. Winger, Mr. Schnall, do you have any comments on that? Your opinion?
Yes, sir, I do have an opinion on that. I, I don't know exactly what Ms. Winger is referring to in the way of authority for her statement, but I do, in my opinion, is that Mr. McCormick correctly stated the applicable law. My opinion is that the applicable law is that Section 22.005 of the Texas Local Government Code and Article 16, Section 1 of the Texas Constitution require an elected person to take an oath of office before assuming that office. There is also case law to support that opinion, in my judgment. In addition, Mr. McCormick is correct, that Section 22.007 of the Texas Local Government Code, in my opinion, also provides that if the officer-elect fails to take the oath of office within 30 days of the date of the election, then the office is considered vacant. I, again, do not know exactly what authority Ms. Winger intends to cite for, to support her motion, but I would like the opportunity to speak on that.
Perhaps the same authority used for a ruling last time?
Sanderson. Mr. Schnall, please continue.
I would like the opportunity to respond to any citation given in order to provide my opinion to this governing body. Thank you.
Mr. Schnall, just to clarify, your opinion is based off that of the Secretary of State as well as Texas Municipal League, is that correct?
I have an email from the Elections Division of the Office of the Secretary of State, which is consistent with the statements that Mr. McCormick and I have made this evening. I have an email from the General Counsel of the Texas Municipal League, also to the same effect.
Okay, does anybody have any comments?
I have a comment. I'm referring to Local Government Code 22033, which states that the governing body of the municipality is the sole judge of the election and qualifications of its members. So, this body sat here while, while Ms. Gonzalez took the oath of office and said nothing. You, as the council, as Mr. McCormick has so kindly pointed out, failed to take any action. The city manager, who is supposed to be so experienced, failed to take any action, and the city secretary, who under law also has a responsibility, failed to take any action. Therefore, it is up to the governing body to decide who's qualified, and I move to qualify Sylvia Gonzalez for the, on the motion that I stated.
My second stills in force.
My response, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. McCormick, yes, sir.
The fact is that at the swearing-in ceremony, Judge Cantu was here and offered to swear in everyone present who needed to be sworn in. Judge Cantu is an authorized individual, one who is authorized by the Election Code to administer an official oath. He was present and made the offer specifically to Ms. Gonzalez. Ms. Gonzalez declined. Sheriff Salazar was present, and he administered the oath. It is not up to the council to police the individual council members to determine that they're doing the right thing for themselves, because it's their job to find somebody to swear them in. Ms. Gonzalez made that choice. She was mistaken in her, in her reliance on Mr. Salazar to be able to render such an oath, and that disqualified her from office under Section 22.005 and 22.007. 22.033 applies only to permission to be able to, to be on the ballot, to be elected. Once one is elected, one is not an Alderman, one is an Alderman-elect until all of the other qualifications are met.
We have had...
The council, excuse me, I'm talking, if you don't mind, I'd like a little courtesy. I know I can expect very little here, but nonetheless.
Mr. McCormick, please proceed.
The 22.033 applies only to qualifications to run for office. It does not apply to qualification for the office, and 22.05 adds the qualification of an official oath. 22.07 says it has to be completed before entering into the, the duties of the office. Notwithstanding that Ms. Gonzalez has performed de facto as a councilman, that doesn't obviate the law, neither does any opinion or vote of the council change the state law applicable in this case.
Thank you, Mr. McCormick. Mr. Sanderson, you had a comment?
Yes, by this rather tortured logic right here, then if you were to go ahead and hire a real estate attorney, and you wanted them to go ahead and construct a contract to, to rent or lease a building, then you would be, that, that client would therefore be required to go ahead and understand and learn all the necessary ins and outs of, of tort and contract law. So, what would be the whole point of hiring an attorney if, if indeed you have to go ahead and learn the law to begin with? This, in my opinion, is a non-secutor and a non-starter.
Thank you, Mr. Sanderson. Mr. Schnall, please.
Mr. Mayor, members of the governing body, Mr. McCormick, I think, explained it fairly well, in my opinion, about the difference between being qualified and actually qualifying. I think these terms are different, they have different definitions, in my opinion. The Court of Appeals in Nichols versus Lincoln Trust, a 1999 decision, said, "The definition of 'qualify' is to make oneself fit or prepared to exercise a right office or franchise, to take the steps necessary to prepare oneself for an office or appointment as by taking an oath." Well, qualified, the court says, well, qualified is defined as adapted, fitted, entitled, susceptible, capable, fitting, possessing legal power or capacity, eligible. The wording in the Local Government Code of Section 22.032 is about the qualification of a person to be on the governing body, and Section 22.032 of the Local Government Code reads, "To be eligible for the office of Alderman of the municipality, a person must be a registered voter and must reside on election day in the ward from which the person may be elected." Section 22.033 says, "The governing body of the municipality is the judge of the election and qualifications of its members." My opinion is that the wording "election and qualifications of its members" is different from the word "actually qualifying by taking the oath of office," which, as I said earlier, in my opinion, is a mandate of Sections, of Article 16, Section 1 of the Texas Constitution and of Section 22.005 of the Texas Local Government Code, and in my opinion, it is not appropriate to try and read one section of a code and ignore the rest of the code. Therefore, my opinion continues to be that because Ms. Gonzalez, by her admission to me, in the presence of others, that the only person who administered the oath of office to Ms. Gonzalez was Sheriff Salazar, in my opinion, she did not meet the statutory requirement to be sworn into office by taking the oath by a person eligible to administer oaths in the state of Texas for this purpose prior to 30 days after the date of the election. And I disagree with Mr. Sanderson's statement that I had some duty to inform an elected but non-acting city official to do anything.
You were paid $275 an hour.
Especially when I was not asked. Had I been asked for an opinion, I would have looked it up and rendered an opinion, but not having been asked, I did not have any responsibility whatsoever. I agree with Mr. McCormick's statement because it's my opinion that a person who was able to get elected to office should be able to figure out what it takes to then serve in office.
My response to that is, again, additional tortured logic in that somehow perhaps a murder suspect has to go ahead and request that during trial.
Point of order. Point of order.
Ms. McLean, yes, ma'am.
Point of order, he's not on topic.
Okay. Mr. Gregory, you had a comment?
Mr. Schnall, I'd like a copy of the, the section of the Texas Constitution that you're citing, so I can read it for myself.
Do you have it? Mr. Gregory, I'm glad to find it, I have it here.
Give you a couple of seconds to review that because I imagine it'll be pertinent to your decision, Mr. Gregory.
Mr. Mayor, I believe we still have a vote to take.
I was going to give Mr. Gregory a couple of minutes to review that.
I still have some things to say.
Sure.
May I speak?
Mr. Gregory, please.
Looking at Section 22.007, on the third, there are only three little lines, but there's one very interesting word. If a municipal officer-elect fails to qualify for office within 30 days after the date of the officer's elections, the office is considered vacant. I think it's interesting they add the word "considered" as opposed to just saying the office is vacant. So, when they add the, the word "considered," I think that's a qualifier, because if it is left blank, they would just simply say it is vacant. And then you go over to 22.033. "The governing body of the municipality is the judge of the election and qualifications of its members." It seems to me that if the person who won the election overwhelmingly, or just won the election, and meets the qualifications to run, that it is up to the council to judge whether or not the election and the qualifications are valid, and that's what the code says. So, it goes back to, and I, I looked at this, and I'm trying to see where it is that you draw your conclusion that it is vacant, not considered vacant, but vacant. I'm looking under, do, especially the audience, instead of yapping, would open your ears and come to a, and come to a conclusion once you hear stuff, not trying to yell a conclusion. Please, this is, this is not, this is the first time this has ever happened in the City of Castle Hills, first time, and you better do it right.
Mr. Gregory, if you can stay on topic.
Okay, I'm, I'm, I'm looking at Vernon's annotated co- code, Article 16, Section 17. Where does it say in this that the person after 30 days cannot seat?
Because until the person has taken the oath of office from someone who is authorized to administer the oath of office in Texas, they have not qualified to serve on the governing body. That is why Ms. McLean is sitting up there, because she is the last person to qualify to sit in Place Number Three. She qualified to sit in Place Number Three. No one else has qualified for that place by taking the oath of office in a timely fashion. Therefore, under Article 16, Section 17 of the Constitution, Ms. McLean is entitled to sit on that dais, in my opinion.
There I understand, but this says if you fail to qualify within 30 days, it is considered vacant, but it doesn't say if 40 days, or 50 days, or 60 days pass, if an error is found and corrected, that is a new qualification. I can understand what they're saying by 30 days to qualify, that is, to get everybody's ducks in a row, but if you, if you come back and eventually get sworn in by a qualified individual, I don't see anything here that says that's not valid. Now, Mrs. McLean probably should sit in that slot in June, I mean, in July, because as I understand it, Mrs. Gonzalez hadn't been sworn in by the July election, I mean, by the July council meeting, but she has been sworn in subsequent to the July meeting. May I respond?
Mr. McCormick, please.
Excuse me, for people in the audience, you folks need to keep quiet and maintain the quorum, otherwise you'll be asked to leave. There'll be any ifs, ands, or buts, you'll just be asked to leave the place.
Mr. McCormick?
Here, here.
Please, continue.
Excuse me, now, responding to Mr. Gregory's point, the qualifications that are concerned in 22.032 are those, are those, I'm sorry, those qualifications concerned in 22.032, where the council has the right to judge those qualifications, are the qualifications set forth in 22.032, where it specifies that somebody has to be a resident for six months and voting in the count, in the, the location where the election is to be held. The other qualification, that qualification that's specified in 22.005, which says that the oath has to be administered by someone who is authorized to administer the oath. If the, if the qualification is not completed within 30 days, the office is considered vacant. It's vacant at that point. Once it's considered vacant, it's always considered vacant, and there's no opportunity specified in the code whereby a person can go back and correct that failure to qualify before the 30-day period is up. All things considered, 30 days is probably a reasonable period of time for somebody to figure out that they've got a problem with the qualification. As a matter of fact, everybody who is on council now, and Ms., Ms. Gonzalez as well, had a copy of the document called the Candidate's Packet, which includes the voting instructions, I mean, the, the oath instructions for the people required to take an oath to sit on the council, and they've had an opportunity to ask about who they, who could give the oath, and certainly that's a reasonable question for someone to have asked who was going to take an oath to sit on the council, as who could administer it. It's not too hard to figure out that retired judges generally can administer oaths. So, the fact is that the, that the qualifications that Ms. Winger so loudly touts are not the qualifications that we're concerned with here. There's a great body of, of case law addressing the question of the oath, and a great body of case law addressing the Constitution. The Constitution and, and Texas law occupies four full volumes in the Black Statutes with a whole bunch of case law behind it. There's case law here that says that, that the oath is a qualification. The statute says the oath is required. The statute also says that if you don't meet all those qualifications within 30 days, the seat's vacant. Considered vacant, that's, that's disingenuous, Mr. Gregory, really, disingenuous. So, the fact is that Ms. Gonzalez didn't qualify in time, she's out, she's not on the council at the present, and we haven't had a judicial decision on it, and the council is not in a position to render a legitimate vote purporting to change state law.
Thank you, Mr. McCormick. I'd like to add that...
I'd like to say something.
Ms. Winger, I have the floor, please, thank you. I'd like to add that Mr. Schnall and myself have talked to the Secretary of State's Elections Office, who has given the opinion that the seat has been vacated because Ms. Gonzalez was not sworn in within 30 days as required by law. Mr. Schnall, did you have additional comments?
Yes, sir. I'm going to read a quote that I believe, in my opinion, supports the position that both Mr. McCormick and I have expressed. This is a quote from State versus Cock, 54 Texas 482, decided by the Texas Supreme Court in 1881, and this is the quote. "There is a distinction between the right to an office and the right to enter upon the duties of an office, is evident from the terms of Article 16, Section 1 of the Constitution, which provides that all officers, before they enter upon the duties of their office, shall take the official oath, etc. There is a similar statutory provision in regard to the office under consideration." Then, moving down in this opinion, it says, "This is further evident in subsequent Article 4518 in regard to the office of sheriff, which provides that on the failure to give the bond and take the oath within 20 days, quote, 'the office shall be deemed vacant,' close quote, and the Commissioners Court of the county shall appoint, quote, 'as in other case of vacancy,' close quote. That a vacancy can be created by the election of one eligible to hold office and his failure to qualify has been expressly decided." In my opinion, State versus Cock, therefore, supports the position that the time limit is relevant, Mr. Gregory. The time limit is there for a reason to allow an elected, an officer-elect to have adequate time to fulfill the steps needed to serve in the office by taking the oath of office, in my opinion, and it appears from the information that we have that Ms. Gonzalez failed to do that. So, therefore, in my opinion, the language in Section 2207 that the office is considered vacant is the equivalent of it being vacant, in my opinion. So, I, I, I believe that the legislature had a purpose in having that language in 22007, and it is my opinion that there are, there is a remedy for this situation in the language in Section 22010 of the Texas Local Government Code, which sets out the steps to be taken in the event there is one vacancy or more than one vacancy on a city council. So, it, my opinion is essentially the same opinion that I spoke about when this issue was first raised by an anonymous complaint to Mayor Trevino on or about July 8 or 9, in that the various steps were taken to double-check this with the Office of the Texas Municipal League and with the Elections Division of the Office of the Secretary of State, and my opinion remains the same, that we're in a situation that was caused, whether it was an accident, whether it was a mistake, it was caused by the failure to meet the statutory requirements that, in my opinion, were needed to be followed in order for a person to become a member of this governing body, and the failure to timely take the oath of office, in my opinion, renders the office to be considered vacant, and when an office is considered vacant, then, in my opinion, you can look to Section 22.010 of the Local Government Code for guidance.
Thank you, Mr. Schnall. Mr. Gregory?
City Attorney, a question.
Yes, sir, please.
Mark, when you, I was listening to that site, site said 21 days, the state says now 30. Does the statute or the Constitution, I know they say that Mrs., that Mrs. McLean continues in the seat because it's held vacant due to somebody who failed to follow the rule of swearing in at X number of days, but does it prohibit somebody who, once they recognize the mistake has been made and they're sworn in by an affirmative person, does that rectify the error and Mrs. McLean, who's basically sitting in there as a holdover, can be vacated and the qualified elected individual can then sit in that seat?
In the event that the person realizes the, recognizes the problem and addresses it by getting sworn in by someone who is authorized to administer oaths in the state of Texas within 30 days of the date of the May 4 election for this year, then, in my opinion, that person would then be qualified and entitled to sit in the office, but because that didn't happen here, it is my opinion that Ms. McLean is entitled, in fact, the statute, the Constitution language which I gave you does not use the word "may," does not use the word "shall," I mean, does not use the word "may" or "should," it uses the word "shall," which is typically understood, in my opinion, to be a, a word of, of mandate, not an, an option. So, Mrs. McLean is really obligated, in my opinion, to fill this seat so that the functions of government of this so that the functions of government of this community and of this city can go on. And there is, as I said earlier, in my opinion, a way for this to be rectified by following the rules that are set out in Section twenty-two oh one oh of the Texas Local Government Code, about how the governing body, what the government body must do, in my opinion, in order to fill the vacancies or to authorize the filling of vacancies on the governing body.
Is there any prohibition in the Texas Constitution or the government code that says you cannot be sworn in after the thirty days? I agree with what you said about Mrs. McLean. She is filling a slot considered vacant. Can the person, once understanding they've made a mistake, get sworn in by a duly-qualified person, once rectifying their mistake because they failed to qualify within thirty days? They are then, does it prohibit them doing this after the thirty days?
In my opinion, Mr. Gregory, the law is that the failure to qualify within thirty days cannot be fixed after thirty days. That would be to be in contravention with the terms of Section twenty-two double oh seven of the Local Government Code. There's another section in the Local Government Code which permits a municipality to take actions, but not to take actions which are inconsistent with state law. And it, to my, in my opinion, it would be inconsistent with state law for someone to miss the thirty-day deadline and then somehow discover the problem sixty days or thirty days after the expiration of the thirty-day deadline and say, "Well, it doesn't matter." I think the legislature, in my opinion, makes it matter by wording the language in twenty-two oh oh seven to put a thirty-day limit on how long it is before an officer-elect is able to take the oath of office and qualify to serve. The legislature picked the thirty-day limit, I did not. In my opinion, we should respect the wording of the legislature in this situation. And if the legislature had sixty, said sixty days and Ms. Gonzalez qualified on day fifty-nine, we probably wouldn't be here right now. But the legislature said thirty days, and in my opinion, thirty days means thirty days.
Yes, but my question was, not that, because I agree with you. My question was, does the state or any of the authorities that you cite say that it is prohibited, once the thirty-day violation has occurred, it prohibits the person from then taking the oath and sitting the seat? Now, the reason, let me, let me finish this one thing. The reason that's important, which I can't imagine that they would not allow that to happen, is the legislature wouldn't want to have a situation that you have right now, that the person who won, who trounced her opponent, is being set by the person that she's set. You basically are disenfranchising the vote. I can't imagine the legislature wants that to happen. And therefore, that's why I'm asking, is there anything in your citation that says, after thirty days, Mrs. McLean is sitting there as she should be, but after thirty days, cannot Ms. Gonzalez be dutifully sworn in and then take her seat as now qualified?
In my opinion, Mr. Gregory, the answer to your last question is no. It is too late for Ms. Gonzalez to qualify based upon the May four two thousand nineteen election. In my opinion, the remedy available to Ms. Gonzalez, the remedy available to this governing body is for the governing body to follow the rules set out in Section twenty-two point oh one oh of the Texas Local Government Code, which spells out what the options are for the governing body in the event of one vacancy, or in the event of more than one vacancy on the governing body. Mrs. Gonzalez is perfectly able, in my opinion, to put herself in a position in inconsistency with Section twenty-two oh one oh. But at this point, I do not believe, my opinion is, that it is too late for her to be sworn in by somebody eligible to administer oaths and qualify for this office. The period of time, in my opinion, for Ms. Gonzalez to have qualified to serve as Alderwoman Place Three of the City of Castle Hills expired at twelve midnight, or twelve oh one AM, on June four, two thousand nineteen, which was the thirty-first day after the May fourth election. Anything that happened after that date and time was too late. I did not make this up, but this is my opinion.
Further, one more thing.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said, Mr. Gregory.
I have one more question to ask. If you think this is easy, people, it's not.
Mr. Gregory, can you please stay on topic?
We have a situation where you have one questionable seat. We have a city, a person on the council who's tendered his resignation, but it has to be accepted by the council in order for him to be off the council, according to the government code. Can the council, if we take this particular seat one at a time, can that be filled by a person to finish one year up until the next general election at this time?
Mr. McCorm, uh, Mr. Gregory, I don't think so. In my opinion, the Election Code supersedes the section of the Local Government Code that I think you were referring to. The Election Code says that a resignation of a member of the governing body is effective on the earlier of acceptance by the governing body or eight days after the resignation is submitted.
Well, that's a lot more than what the local government code says.
The Election Code is a more recent enacted statute. The section of the Election Code, um, was, I believe, enacted in, uh, nineteen eighty-nine, and the Local Government Code in nineteen eighty-seven. And I believe that the findings will be, my opinion, um, my position, which is the equivalent of my opinion, is that the terms of the Election Code are controlling in this situation. So, um, the, the, to come back to the argument that was made about the, the section of the Local Government Code that talks about the council being the judge of the election and qualification, it is my opinion that by using the word "qualification," the legislature was talking about the previous section of the same code, the section that is captioned "qualification." And that is not the same as qualifying for office. Being qualified to run for election, meeting the qualification of being a resident on the date of the election is not the same, in my opinion, as qualifying to serve. Qualifying to serve, in my opinion, based upon the research that I have done and the opinions that I have obtained with Mr. Fletcher's assistance from the Office of the Secretary of State Elections Division and the Texas Municipal League, is that qualifying for office requires taking the oath of office. And that is what the problem is here. And in my opinion, the governing body's authority is limited to the qualification to run for office, but not, does not extend to whether or not someone actually took the steps necessary by taking the oath and qualifying to serve. And, and it's too late now, in my opinion, for Ms. Gonzalez to cure that error. It is not too late for the governing body, in my opinion, to follow Section twenty-two point oh one oh of the Local Government Code, which sets out what must happen in order to deal with the situation when there is a single vacancy on the governing body, or two vacancies on the governing body.
Thank you, Mr. Snell, Ms. Winger.
So what we have here are a lot of opinions. Your opinion, the Secretary of State, one attorney in that office, um, and then the Texas Municipal League, which is another attorney, and it, none of those together even have the weight of the opinion of the Attorney General's office, which has not weighed in on this. And even then, that's an opinion. Um, everybody that's looked at this, there is no case law in this, in this instance. If it happens, and I've said this before, Douglas Gregory and I were sworn in in two thousand fourteen by Susan Parmelo, who was the sheriff, the same position the Sheriff Salazar had. And it was never questioned. And the reason it was important is that she herself said to me, when I called her, "I have to find out if I'm eligible. I don't know that I am." And she checked with the Secretary of State's office in two thousand fourteen. I have spoken to her recently, and she was told then that she was qualified. So I am going to renew my motion to declare that City Council Place Three has never been vacated, and that Sylvia Gonzalez is and has always been qualified to hold her elective office of Alderman Place Three of the Castle Hill City Council, and I call for the vote.
Mr. Snell, you have a comment, please?
I call for the vote. I don't need another opinion.
Mr. Snell, please, you had a comment?
Yes, sir. Um, it is my understanding, from information that I was-
Make a motion to end debate and do the vote.
Mr. Sanderson?
It is my understanding-
Mr. Sanderson, Mr. Snell's talking, give me one second, please.
It is my understanding that the swearing in by Sheriff Parmelo was ceremonial, and that a swearing in by a person authorized to administer oaths was done to swear in Ms. Winger and two other members of this, former members of this governing body at the time she stated.
Who was that?
I inquired of the Elections Director of the Office of the Secretary of State by telling him this. During this controversy, Ms. Gonzalez and Ms. Leslie Winger, a co-plaintiff in the present lawsuit, have alleged that former Sheriff Susan Parmelo checked with the Office of the Secretary of State about her ability to administer the oath of office to incoming Councilwoman Leslie Winger in two thousand fourteen or two thousand fifteen, had been, had been told that she could do so. "We would appreciate your checking to see if there is any record of that in your office." And the response I received from the Director of Elections of the Elections Division of the Office of Secretary of State is, quote, "We have no record of such advice being given," close quote.
Thank you, Mr. Snell.
I call for the vote.
We call for a vote, we're going to do a roll call vote?
Mr. Mayor?
I object to the vote, because it will result, it may result in an illegal result, intending to violate state law. And that's an improper vote for you to support as mayor. It's an improper vote for the council to make as members. And it will be, if it, if it passes, it will be an illegal vote attempting to revise state law improperly. And so I object to it. I don't think it's appropriate for, for the, for the chair to allow such a vote to go forward.
Thank you, Mr. McCormick. Mr. Snell, do you have an opinion?
I do not have an opinion, Mayor.
I make a motion to end debate.
Excuse me?
A motion to end the, the debate on this item.
I already called for the vote.
Okay, call for a vote, we're going to do a roll call vote. Mr. McCormick?
What is the question? I mean, what is the question that we're, yes, we're no one?
Mr. Gregory, can you read that out loud, so everybody has a call, or Ms. Winger? Okay. Uh, Mr. McCormick, we're going to do a roll call vote, and it's my understanding that Ms. McLean cannot vote, is that correct, Mr. Snell?
What's, what's the question? First, we need to know what the question is.
So we're, we're voting on Ms. Winger's motion, whether, uh, Ms. Gonzalez, can you read your motion, Ms. Winger?
Yes, I can. I move to declare that City Council Place Three has never been vacated, and that Sylvia Gonzalez is and has always been qualified to hold her elective office of Alder, Alderwoman Place Three of the Castle Hill City Council.
Um, Mr. Snell, one more quick question before we proceed. Um, if council does make a vote, how can that be affected by state law?
It can be challenged in court.
Mr. Snell, thank you.
The, the Local Government Code has a provision about the validity of actions by a governing body. Um, anyone who is, um, affected and has standing could bring a lawsuit to declare the action void. Um, and if, if it is contrary or inconsistent with state law, they would have a pretty good case, in my opinion, if they were to choose to do that.
Okay, so wasting more taxpayer dollars. Um, Mr. McCormick, your roll call vote?
I vote negative on the motion.
We have a nay from Mr. McCormick, Mr. Sanderson?
I vote positive, yes.
A yes by Mr. Sanderson. Ms. Winger?
Aye.
Aye by Ms. Winger. Mr. Gregory?
No.
No? Yes, sir, Mr. Snell?
In the case of a tie vote, the mayor is entitled to vote.
Thank you. Having talked to Chief Ingram, the Director at the Elections Office of the Secretary of State, as well as TML and other lawyers, I feel confident voting no.
I'd, I'd like to call, I'd like to call for a recess.
I'd like to go ahead and make a, a motion that, that we go ahead and not seat Amy McLean, because it's a violation of Open Meetings Act. This was not announced beforehand. In addition to that, I'm making an appeal to the board, since she was seated by the mayor itself. Can we go ahead and proceed with that vote, Ms. Mayor, pro tem?
Um, Mr. Sanderson, that's not on the agenda, I don't think we can do that. Uh, Mr. Snell?
Um, I-
I'm making an appeal to the board.
Excuse me?
I'm making an appeal to the board, so, in other words, bypassing the mayor, I'd like to go ahead and make, and make a vote to go ahead and unseat Ms. McLean.
Okay. Um, Mr. Snell, you want to give us your legal opinion?
My opinion is that Ms. McLean is legally obligated, in my opinion, based upon Article sixteen, Section seventeen of the Texas Constitution, to continue to serve in the capacity as Alderwoman Place Three until her successor is elected and qualified. And until that point, there is nothing to remove her from, and it does not require action. There are cases which say that Article sixteen, Section seventeen of the Texas Constitution is self-executing, meaning that it is automatic that the holdover, holder of an office continues to serve until their successor is qualified. And until that happens, Ms. McLean is automatically obligated, by the use of the word "shall" in the Constitution, to perform those services. There is an agenda item later on this agenda which will allow the council to take the action, which, in my opinion, is mandated by Section twenty-two oh one oh of the Local Government Code in this situation.
Thank you, Mr. Snell. Um, Mr. Sanderson, I would suggest if you'd like to bring that forward, that you-
I still believe this is a, a, an open meetings violation right here, this is not announced?
Point, or, Mrs. Winger, already called for recess.
Ms. McLean, I'll acknowledge your point of order.
Mrs. Winger had alwa, already called, called for recess.
Okay, can we have a five-minute recess? It's a little bit later than the five minutes, but if everybody can make their way back to their seat, we still have twenty-some other agenda items to accomplish, hopefully. Thank you all for sticking it out with us. Mr. Fletcher, would you mind grabbing our missing colleagues, please?
Ms. Winger, you mean?
Yes, sir, Mr. McCormick. Was that? Mr. Fletcher's letting them know we're getting ready to start.
Mr. Mayor, I have a motion.
Yes, sir, Mr. McCormick.
At your request, I'd like to drop several items and move direct to item eleven so we can get that out of the way.
Seven twenty-six.
Item ten, the resignation was effective, my resignation was effective under the Election Code eight days after it was submitted, which would have been last weekend. Item twelve, we can't appoint a citizen to fill either place, place one vacancy, or place three because we have two vacancies. And that requires a special election under Section twenty-two point oh one oh of the Local Government Code, item D.
Yes, sir.
So I'd like to drop those, for those four items, and move direct to item eleven.
And that's ten and twelve, correct?
I want to drop ten, twelve, thirteen, and fourteen to the, except to the extent that we're, drop fourteen.
Okay, thank you, Mr. McCormick. We have a motion to drop ten, twelve, thirteen, and fourteen by Mr. McCormick. Do we have a second?
Second. Dropping ten and twelve?
Ten, twelve, thirteen, and fourteen. So we have first by Mr. McCormick, second by Ms. McLean.
We ain't dropped fourteen. We just voted on it, so you can't drop it.
Okay, so ten, twelve, and thirteen then. Mr. McCormick, are you all right with that?
Well, except to the extent that fourteen includes an alternative to appoint Sylvia Gonzalez to Place Three on the City Council. And I don't think we can do that either. So if we're not going to attempt to do that, yes, I'm okay with it.
Okay, so dropping ten, twelve, and thirteen. First by Mr. McCormick, second by Ms. McLean. Discussion. Mr. Gregory, please.
I'd like to ask the City Attorney on item ten, you said that twenty-two point zero twelve has been superseded?
I'm saying that the Election Code provision controls, and the Election Code provision is, in my opinion, what Mr. McCormick said, that I think it's Section two oh three point oh thirty-one. Mr. Fletcher is going to look it up for me to make sure. Section two oh one point oh twenty-three, if an officer submits a resignation, whether effective immediately or at a future date, a vacancy cure occurs on the date the resignation is accepted by the appropriate authority or on the eighth day after the date of receipt by the authority, whichever is earlier. So my opinion is that that statute, which was last amended, effective September one nineteen eighty-nine, is the controlling statute in this event, so that there's no necessity for the governing body to, in my opinion, no necessity for the governing body to accept Mr. McCormick's resignation. It was automatically effective on Saturday, August tenth.
Have there been rulings by the courts that the Election Code supersedes the Local Government Code? It's important because in the Texas Local Government Code Book, twenty eighteen, it still has item twenty-two point zero twelve. If that's been superseded by the Election Code two years after the citation of eighty-seven, why is this still in the Local Government Code? So my question is, have the court said that the Election Code supersedes the Local Government Code?
My opinion is that there are cases which say that the, when there are statutes that are in conflict, the statute last adopted is the controlling statute. And sometimes the legislature is so busy doing other things that they don't pick up on this kind of a situation. If it's the will of this governing body to vote to accept Mr. McCormick's resignation anyway, that's the will of this governing body, but the motion made to drop items ten, eleven, and, excuse me, ten, twelve, and thirteen, in my opinion, is an acceptable motion. If you would prefer to amend that motion to simply have it applied to items twelve and thirteen, and then the governing body can return to item ten, that would be something that you could do, and then the governing body could make the decision it deems best.
Well, the reason it's important is because it all dovetails in this number eleven. Because if what you're saying, the latter supersedes the Local Government Code, then eleven, excuse me, then ten is perfect. But if it doesn't, and as I say, I find it interesting, here is a decision on nineteen eighty-nine that hasn't been picked up by the Local Government Code Book from twenty eighteen, I'm working under the assumption that it doesn't supersede it, because they wouldn't have it in here if it does. And they've had eighty-nine, ninety-nine, thirty, almost thirty years to correct this part of the book. So it strikes me that the Election Code does not supersede the Local Government Code. And if it does, it would have so changed number twenty-two point zero twelve.
Response, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir, Mr. McCormick.
Mr. Gregory, you're speculating as to the intent of the legislature. The accepted rule of construction is that most recent statute prevails. In this case, there wasn't any addressing an earlier statute by the Election Code, and so it looks to me like the Election Code, since it says hard and fast that it is one of these two things, the earlier of the eighth day or the date it's accepted by the governing body, I think that obviously is a controlling statute. I don't see how you get the idea that you can go back and change what the law is on personal opinion or speculation as to what the intent of the legislature might have been.
No, I'm not changing the law. I'm just trying to find out, I'm just, it's curious in my mind, if it was changed in two years after the citation in here, and the book continues thirty years later continuing to hold the eighty-seventh citation and not the eighty-nine citation, a reasonable, logical conclusion would be the eighty-seven citation supersedes the eighty-nine.
Not at all. It's not a reasonable assumption because there are established rules of construction with regard to legislative intent in construing statutes. And this is a standard, this is a standard rule of legislative construction when you're comparing old statutes to more recent statutes. The more recent statute evidences the most recent opinion or most recent rulings of the legislature with regard to that particular subject. So here we're talking about the, my resignation having been effective last weekend. I don't think there's any question what the Election Code provides that. If you want to vote on it, I think you're welcome to go ahead and do that. I don't think it's going to make a difference to me one way or the other. But it will make a difference to what you try to do then with the appointment to fill a position that is currently empty. We've dropped that at the moment, and we've decided not to proceed in that direction. And so the reasonable thing to me, it seems, is to proceed with what the statute requires when there are two vacancies and go ahead and schedule a special election to fill both the two vacancies and let me the hell out of here.
Ms. Winger, yes, ma'am?
You know, I'm just so tired of listening to Mr. McCormick's legal opinions.
Ms. Winger, do you have anything that's germane to the topic?
I would like to say that everybody is speculating on the intent of the legislature. Nobody knows what the intent of the legislature is unless you go back and ask them. And nobody knows what the court is going to say until you ask them. So, you know, all of this statement that there's case law when we know there is no case law in this case, there are things, but not about this.
Okay, we have a motion to table ten, twelve, thirteen, a second by Ms. McLean. All in favor?
McLean wasn't allowed to vote.
Ms. Winger, she is allowed to vote?
Except on her successor.
Yes, that's correct. Sure, you want to, Mr. McCormick, Mr. Gregory wants to vote on each one individually?
Okay.
Okay, so-
We, Mayor, to do that is going to have to require an amendment to the motion. We can't just vote on these piecemeal. Doesn't work that way. So the options are to make a motion to amend Mr. McCormick's motion, see if that gets a second, vote on the amendment, and then vote on the, the motion is amended. And if that amendment is to only vote on, say, items twelve and thirteen, then the governing body can vote on items twelve and thirteen, and Mr. McCormick can make a new motion or not on what he wants to do on item ten. But we can't vote on a motion to do A, B, and C and only vote on A at one time, B on one time, and C on one time. I'm not comfortable with that. That, in my opinion, would be that it would not be appropriate under Roberts' rules to try and bifurcate the motion in that way.
Thank you, Mr. Snell.
The method, I think, would be, and I, my opinion would be, to have the motion either withdrawn and remade or amended to specify which items could be voted on as separate items independently.
Thank you, Mr. Snell. Do we have a motion or amendment? Mr. Gregory?
I move a motion to amend the motion to include item twelve and thirteen.
Okay, so you're amending the motion to include only twelve and thirteen? Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, we have a second for Mr. Gregory's amendment?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a second by Ms. McLean. All in favor? Okay, that's three, all opposed. Mr. Sanderson and Ms. Winger? I didn't know if there was something you needed to say. Okay, I'm sorry. So the amendment passes. Now we're back to the original motion. All in favor? Is that correct, Mr. Snell?
What are we voting on? Item ten?
No, you're voting now on the motion, your original motion as amended to only be to table items twelve and thirteen.
Right.
I thought we just did that.
That was the amendment. Now we're going back to the original motion.
Voting on the main motion, Mr. McCormick.
And we're voting just on items twelve and thirteen?
Yes, sir.
As amended, okay.
All in favor? All opposed? Ms. Winger and Mr. Sanderson are the nays. Motion passes. Okay. Let's see here. I'd like to, might as well jump to item eleven. Discussion and possible act, yes, sir? What was that, Mr. Gregory?
Are we going to do the consent agenda?
My intent was to do it afterwards.
Okay, all right.
Discussion and possible action on ordering a special election on November fifth, twenty nineteen, to fill vacancies for Alderman Place Three and Alderman Place One. Mr. Snell, do you have any comments on this?
Not at this time, Mayor.
Okay.
I'll address it since you've asked. Section twenty-two point oh one oh D specifies that in the event there are two vacancies on the governing body, that there is a special election required. It's not optional. We have to have a special election when there are two vacancies. And so I don't think we really have a choice. I think we have to schedule a special election at the first available opportunity, which I believe now is November, November fifth or whenever it is in November. And I think it's appropriate that we do that. And I move that we schedule a special election on November fifth to fill vacancies for Alderman Place Three and Alderman Place One.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. McCormick. First by Mr. McCormick, second by Ms. McLean. Discussion, Mr. Gregory.
If you take number ten, and I have difficulty with assuming the Election Code of eighty-nine superseded the Local Government Code of eighty-seven as printed in the book in the twenty-eighteen edition, I have difficulty, it seems to me, the Texas Local Government Code- it seems to me, the Texas Local Government Code Book is saying, this is the applicable statute. Therefore, that's why I didn't want to do number 10. And if you, if I, if what I'm believing is this is the applicable statute, then this statute can't be done, it's premature. And what I would like to get, if it's all possible, I'd like to have a written ruling from the Attorney General to find out if that is, if my thinking is correct or incorrect. Is it possible to get that within 30 days, and we can revisit this?
Mr. Snow?
Mr. Gregory, in my opinion, the Office of the Attorney General will only accept a request for a ruling from certain government officials, for a formal Attorney General opinion. No city official, not the mayor, not a member of the governing body, not the city attorney, not the city manager, is among those officials eligible to request an opinion from the Office of the Attorney General, in my opinion. And it is my understanding that the Attorney General generally has up to six months within which to render an opinion when a request is given, when a request is made by an official who is entitled to render such a decision. The deadline to call a special election in November is approaching, it's not imminent in terms of days, but it is before the end of September. I can't remember the exact date in September. There's one deadline, which is, I believe, August 27th. I think the other deadline is September 19th. But in either event, in my opinion, it will not be possible to get a written opinion from the Office of the Attorney General within that time period. It might be possible to get an informal opinion by email from the Office of the Secretary of State, but I really cannot speak for that agency. I can only render my opinion, which is what I've been doing all evening.
Well, I could take that, and if we can table this for one month, and yet still revisit this in appropriate time, I'd be much.
Thank you, Mr. Gregory, and Ms. McLean.
Except that the Texas Election Code, section 201.051, titled "The Time for Ordering an Election," provides that if a vacancy in the office is to be filled by special election, the election shall be ordered as soon as practicable after the vacancy occurs, subject to subsection B, which is vacancy to be filled by a special election to be held on the date of the general election for state and county officers, and the election shall be ordered not later than the 78th day before the election. This is the earliest practical time to order a special election. If we don't do it today, then we have violated the statute. We have violated that section of the election code.
Do you believe that's true, Mr. Snow?
Well, I, it looks to be that Ms. McLean's statement about the wording of section 201.051 is accurate.
Mr. McCormick, yes, sir.
Unless I'm mistaken, usually statutes have a section addressing conflicts. And I would be willing to bet that the election code has a section that addresses conflicts with other statutes, and saying which of these applies, if there is such a conflict. So I'd suggest that we might look at that and see if that resolves the issue. I can't see putting this off for a month, because I do not think we have time to do it. I think this needs to be addressed now, I think we need to proceed with it. If Mr. Gregory wants to insist on his skewed interpretation of the statute, he's welcome to do that, but the plain fact is that the rules of legislative construction are pretty well established, there's case law on it out the backside, there's no point in even considering whether this, whether your idea is right or not, it's just absolutely wrong. Sorry about that. But the fact is that the most recent statute generally prevails, and I'd be willing to say that the election code says such in one of its provisions.
Ms. McLean?
We are at the very last time to even hit the 78th day if we were governed by section B. The 78 days is roughly 11 weeks, and 11 weeks is about August 20th. So this is something we need to, yes, sir, that's next Tuesday.
Mr. Snow, a quick question. I'm assuming, you know, the city has to pay for elections, and it would be, I'm assuming, cheaper for us to have our special election during the November election, is that correct?
You really don't have a choice, Mayor. There are only two dates on the calendar that a type A general law city can hold an election, those are the uniform election dates, as determined by the legislature. They are the first Tuesday in November and the first Saturday in May. And, you know, I agree with Ms. McLean that the sooner this is called, the better. If it turns out that it doesn't need to be called, the governing body could consider canceling it. Having it called now will simply make it easier for the city, assuming that it goes forward, to have the time to work with the Bear County Elections Administrator to do a joint election. I believe that there is a, going to be an election in November on a variety of constitutional amendments. So in my opinion, it makes sense to go ahead and order this election this evening. The council always has the option to cancel the election if it turns out for any reason that that, the election need not be held. But my opinion is that the combination of the vacancy created by Mr. McCormick's resignation on Saturday, effective Saturday, August 10th, combined with the considered vacancy due to the failure of the holder of Place 3 to timely take the oath of office, creates two vacancies in the governing body that mandates, as Mr. McCormick suggested, in my opinion mandates, the operation of section 22.010D. If two or more vacancies on the governing body exist at the same time, a special election shall be ordered to fill the vacancies, and it gives anyone who wishes to run for those vacancies, including Ms. Gonzalez, the opportunity to do so.
Thank you, Mr. Snow. Any more comments?
What's the latest date that we can cancel? What's the latest date that we can cancel the election? Mr. Snow?
Excuse me?
What is the latest date in which we can cancel the election?
I'm looking at the electronic election calendar to see if that's on here. I'm in September now, but I'm not quite there yet. Well, Mr. Gregory, I'm not seeing anything, I'm already into October, and I'm not seeing that. But there's a deadline, for example, of Tuesday, October 15th, which is the last day to post notice of election on the bulletin board, used for posting of notices of meetings with the governing body. And so if that posting isn't done, that could affect the validity of the election. I've had governing bodies cancel elections for their May elections when there were no unopposed, there were only candidates who had no opposition, and that decision to cancel was made the day or two before the election. But at this point, I mean, looking at this election calendar, it just doesn't make sense for the governing body to watch me read, especially if I, especially if I can't get this to work.
I think you've answered the question, the council has at one time canceled the elections when there was no opposition, and we did that after the last day that you could file. So that probably is the answer to that question. Thank you.
Any other questions?
No, I'll move to amend my motion to call for a special election on November 5th to fill the vacancies for Alderman Place 3 and Place 1, subject to later cancellation by the Council of Warranton.
Thank you, Mr. McCormick. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
A second by Ms. McLean, all in favor? It's three, and all opposed?
I abstain.
I abstain.
Three to zero, and two abstentions, Ms. Gonzalez.
And Mayor, now it's appropriate to vote on the motion as amended?
Yes, sir. Okay, now the motion as amended, all in favor? Three, and all opposed? Abstaining?
Abstaining.
Ms. Winger? Two abstentions, Ms. Winger and Mr. Sanderson. Okay, I had a number of requests to move item number 21 forward as well. Discussion and possible action regarding the appointment employment evaluation.
Yes, I'd like to table that till September.
Second.
I object to tabling such a motion, I request the item be dropped.
Mr. Snow, how do we handle that? We have first and a second, and a motion to drop.
Well, you have a motion and a second on a motion to drop it from the agenda?
Ms. Winger wants to table it till September, till next month.
Was that seconded before Mr. McCormick's comment?
No, Mr. Sanderson seconded it before.
He said, what did Mr. Sanderson second?
Ms. Winger's motion.
Then, then there needs to be a vote on the motion to table, under Roberts' rules.
Okay, we have a motion.
And there's no discussion on a motion to table?
Got it. Motion tabled by Ms. Winger, seconded by Mr. Sanderson, all in favor? It's three, all opposed? Two, motion passes, it is tabled till September. Unless anybody else has any items, we can go back to the consent agenda. Consent agendas are self-explanatory by the City Council, or have been previously discussed, and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless the council ever so requests. The consent agenda is for consideration by City Council only, and not subject to public discussion.
I'd like to table the consent agenda, because I haven't had time to read anything. We've been pretty busy with others.
Ms. McLean?
I'll second that.
Ms. McLean?
Mr. Mayor, these minutes have been on agendas for almost Ms. Winger's entire tenure on council this time, and there's a continued, I need more time to look at them, I need more time to look at them, we're now up to 13 sets of minutes, and we need to get some of these adopted, so that we have records that citizens can look at.
I agree. So that was the first, Ms. Winger, does your second still stand?
My second still stands, yes, sir.
A second by Mr. Sanderson, all in favor? Ms. Winger, that's three, all opposed? Posing is McCormick and McLean. Motion passes, it is tabled till September.
So we tabled all of, all of the consent agenda?
As I understand it, yes, sir.
We tabled, do we vote on A and B and C as well? I understood the only thing Ms. Winger had an objection to was A.
I said the entire consent agenda.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Sanderson. Next up, consider and act upon a proposed tax rate for 2019, take a record vote, and schedule public hearings on the proposed tax rate. Mr. Rapley?
Mayor Council, Mayor Council, we'll get the PowerPoint going here in a second, but I passed out a copy of a presentation. What I wanted to go through with you is the proposed budget for the property tax, effective and rollback calculations. This is obviously similar to what we did last year in going through this process. On June 19th, we provided the tax assessor collector with requested information for upcoming tax rate calculations, certified values received from appraisal district on July 23rd. July 26th, revised 2019 effective and rollback tax rate calculations received from the tax assessor collector. On August 5th, I sent out the, submitted to the governing body, the calculations for your review. And then tonight, we're here to discuss a tax rate. If the proposed tax rate will exceed the rollback, or the effective rate, whichever is lower, we'll have to take a record vote and then schedule the budget hearings. And then we have September 17th, 2019, to adopt the budget and tax rate levy. One thing I want to point out is, due to the cancellations of the budget workshops, I have done a modified budget calendar. I will pass that out to the council in a moment, as soon as I'm done with the presentation. What we're planning to do tonight is make a decision on the tax rate. And then on Thursday, I am submitting the proposed budget to the City Secretary. Next Tuesday, we'll review the city's managers' proposed 2020 budget. Also on that same day, we'll publish the notice, well, this will be done through the appraisal in the Bear County for the 2019 tax year. And then we'll be back on the regular budget calendar for, to hold the first tax hearing on Wednesday, August 21st. And then Tuesday, September 10th, we'll hold the council meeting, have the first reading of the budget, the second hearing on the tax hearing, if required. And then September 17th, adopt the budget that night, and levy a tax rate. Slide number two here. The city has not changed the tax rate .501345 since 2010. Tax rates are comprised of two components, maintenance of operation, interest in sinking. The city does not have any debt obligation paid with property taxes, therefore, the tax rate is comprised entirely of M and O, which is maintenance and operations. Per the tax assessor collector, the rate for the city has not included interest in sinking for 21 years. And there I have a chart showing the last 15 years of the tax rate for the city of Castle Hills. Historically, the citizens approved by election in May 2017, the limitation of increase for ad valorem taxes for resident homestead of persons who is disabled or 65 years or older for tax-free ceiling. This is the second year of the tax freeze and effective rollback rate calculation. Currently, 619 single-family homes are frozen out of the 1,540. Last year's budget tax revenue was calculated differently than prior years due to the freeze portion. The current year is calculated the same as last year and will remain moving forward. Under the effective tax rate, effective tax rate is generally equal to the total rate needed to raise the same amount of property tax for the same properties in both 2018 and 2019 tax years. State law requires two public hearings to be held by the governing body before adopting the proposed tax rate, if the effective tax rate is exceeded. And we have those dates, August 28th and September 11th, September 10th, sorry. Thank you, Laura. The rollback, let's see if we got this working now. Rollback provides the taxing unit with about the same amount of tax it spent the previous year-to-date operations, plus an extra 8% increase for operations and sufficient funds to pay debts, not applicable to Castle Hills in the coming year. The calculated maximum rate allowed by law, which is not subject to the rollback election, voters are entitled to petition for an election if the adopted tax rate exceeds the rollback. Under both the effective and rollback rate calculations, the certified tax rule provided to the tax assessor collector's office, there are documents which are separate, they're in your packet, calculations prepared by the tax assessor collector, the freezable value is subtracted in line 18. Last year, the first year of the freeze created significant change between the tax years. The variance this year due to a significant increase total taxable value largely related to protests. Here, we have the analysis of the tax rate. So we show here the current tax rate, the effective and rollback, with the taxable freeze in the columns under, for instance, current rate. with the taxable freeze in the columns under, um, for instance, current rate, five hundred and seventy-two million. Add back the actual freeze, not including the rate calculation, is seven hundred and ninety-seven thousand. The revenue difference is a hundred and eighty thousand. Uh, if the effective rate is, is taking place by council and proposed, there would be a rate, I mean, a, a, uh, revenue of sixty-one thousand. And if we went to the rollback, there would be two hundred and eighty-one thousand in additional revenue to the proposed budget. Overview of tax values. The certified property tax value is seven hundred and fifty-eight million, three hundred and ninety-three thousand, three fifteen. The freeze adjusted taxable value is a hundred and eighty-one million, eight hundred and forty-three thousand, four forty-one. Out of that freeze, as I indicated before, seven hundred and ninety-seven thousand and ninety thousand dollars. Um, one cent raised, uh, equals to fifty-seven thousand, two hundred and seventeen dollars to the budget. Uh, reported home, uh, home state average taxable value is three hundred and nineteen thousand, six fifty-six. A one-cent increase equates to thirty-one dollars and ninety-seven cents a year. I've listed there in the slide showing the current tax rate, the effective tax rate, and then the rollback for this year's tax rate. In this, this, uh, slide I've put here, this is a one-cent tax increase that would show what the taxable value on a hundred dollars would be and then how much we would earn or every taxable revenue would be from a one-cent. And then questions. And I'd like to add that, um, as part of the proposed budget, I'm recommending to maintain the current tax rate as is. Also, I have Ms. Vigance here, um, for assistance, and she's still our financial consultant. So if you have any questions, she's available as well.
Do we have any questions?
Rate recommended.
We have a first by Ms. Winger, a second by Mr. Sanderson. Do we have any discussion?
Can I get a clip?
Ms., Ms. Winger made a motion to accept the tax rate recommended by Mr. Rapley and Mr. Sanderson seconded. Do we have a discussion? All in favor? Motion passing unanimously.
We have to take a record vote, Mayor.
I'm sorry.
Yes.
I gotta head myself there.
Yes. And then schedule the public hearings.
Okay, so I can start with the record vote?
Yes.
Uh, we're gonna do a record vote. Mr. McCormick, how do you vote?
I vote in favor of the current tax rate.
Mr. Sanderson?
Vote in favor.
Thank you. Mr. Mc, Ms. McLean?
I vote in favor of the current tax rate.
Ms. Winger?
Vote in favor.
Mr. Gregory?
Aye.
Okay, uh, unanimous?
Yeah, now we have to take a record vote on the public hearings to schedule them.
Okay.
I, I don't, calendar, can you tell me what day?
We have those for August twenty-eighth to hold the first tax hea- tax hearing, and then we have...
No, I wanna know what day of the week it is.
It's Wednesday, August twenty-eighth. It was on the original budget calendar approved by council. So this is, gets us back on path for the modified calendar that we have done for presenting and approving the budget.
Is that, is that for, for the public hearing?
That's for the first public hearing on Wednesday, twenty-eighth of August.
Can I ask you a question? What is the la- the last day that we can vote on the budget by law?
November thirtieth?
No, the, the last...
September thirtieth. We're talking about the tax rate, not the budget.
No, sir. The last, the city should adopt the tax rate no later than September twenty-ninth, according to the 2019 City Tax and Budget Deadline Sheet issued by the Texas Municipal League.
Okay.
The last day for the hearing on the budget is September twenty-eighth.
September twenty-eighth? And are we, aren't we now voting on the, on the public hearing for the budget?
No, for the tax rate. That's the next item.
Okay, and then last day for the tax rate is the twenty-ninth of September? And then, and the last day for the budget is the twenty-eighth of September?
No, the last date for the hearing was the twenty-eighth of September.
No, when, when, let me repeat that. Wednesday, August twenty-eighth is the first hearing for the tax.
But I want, I wanna know, I, 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 please, answer my question. The last day that we can vote on the budget and, and the tax rate are one day apart. Am I correct?
Mr. Schnell, do you have that in front of you?
I believe Ms. Winger is correct. What this publication says is that the last date for the public hearing on the budget is the absolute last date is September twenty-eighth. The absolute last date to adopt the budget is September twenty-ninth. And the, and the last date to adopt the tax rate is September twenty-ninth. The local government code, um, provides that the, um, public hearing on the budget has to be at least one day before the city council adopts the tax rate. That's why there's this one-day difference, and I think Ms. Winger was familiar with that.
Yeah, well, I, I'd simply like to, to move the, the da- the September date. The August twenty-eighth date is fine, but I'd like to move the September date to a month later if, if that's possible.
The tax hearing is scheduled for August twenty-eighth, and then to hold the second tax hearing is Tuesday, September tenth. It's a regular council meeting on that day.
But I, but I, I don't, I would not like to have a budget hearing the same day as the council. That's why I'm asking for it to be changed.
Okay, so, Mr. Schnell, would that be an amendment?
Well, I, I didn't, I didn't hear a motion on these dates yet, but I think the important thing for the governing body to understand is that the, um, applicable section of the tax code sets certain rules about the timing of these two public hearings on the proposed tax rate. The first public hearing on the tax rate cannot be before the seventh day after the city publishes its notice of the tax rate. So that if the first public hearing on the tax rate is August twenty-eighth, the city must publish notice no later than August twenty-first. And it's my understanding that the newspaper has strict deadlines and need more, needs more advanced notice 'cause that publication has to be a quarter of a page long.
I don't have any problem with the August twenty-eighth. I just said that. I'm trying to switch the last date.
I, I understand, Ms. Winger. So the other part of this rule is that the second public hearing has to be at least three days after the first public hearing and has to be between, uh, and, and it has to be at least three days and no more than fourteen days before the vote to adopt the tax rate. So the, the staff has to figure this out to determine what the date range would be for the second public hearing so that it fits the statutory rules for the second public hearing.
Okay.
Which, which read...
This, Mark, this is, this is the same or similar calendar we had last year where we had a regular council meeting that we approved the tax rate, I believe, on that same regular council meeting and went through the budget process to hold the first hearing. So, we didn't change anything from last year.
We didn't, we didn't go through the budget. We didn't have a pu- budget hearing on the same day as a, as a council hearing. We may have voted on the tax rate, but that's a different matter, and that's not what I'm talking about.
Yeah, and, and, and I know it's, I know the language is confusing, Ms. Winger, so let me just read straight out of Tax Code Section twenty-six oh six E. "The meeting to vote on the tax increase may not be earlier than the third day or later than the fourteenth day after the date of the second public hearing." So that's why I'm recommending that staff look at the date they propose for the council to act to vote on the tax rate and then work back to make sure that the second public hearing fits on a date that will work for you and the other members of the governing body, but also will meet the statutory requirement.
Okay, I got, I got that. I'm waiting to hear the dates.
Mr. Schnell, would we vote on the existing or we just wait for the dates, the other options to make an amendment?
Mayor, I did not hear a motion to, of what dates were going to be set. I heard Mr. Rapley's recommendation, but I did not hear anyone make a motion. If I misheard, then I apologize.
Mr. Schnell, I'm waiting, I'm trying to not make a motion until I'm sure that it's legal. So, you just said, that you just asked the staff to figure out what the timeframe was. I would like to make the last public hearing as late as it possibly can be legally. That's what I'm waiting to hear.
And I mo- I move that we approve the first date offered by Mr. Rapley for the first public hearing in August, August twenty-eighth. If that's the right date.
It would be, yeah, twenty-eighth. Wednesday, August twenty-eighth.
Then we'll discuss the other date and worry about that date.
Yes, I'm fine.
Okay, um...
Well, we have to let the tax office know what those dates are for the hearings.
Sure.
As well as what the governing body wants to do as far as the rate itself, which you just approved.
You need both dates to publish. You need both dates to publish.
Yeah, we have to have, both dates published.
Let's use that, go back. What, what date are you gonna, what date were you gonna do the tax rate?
It could be, it could be Thursday, September twelve. That's the same day we were planning to. This was on the original budget calendar that was adopted by council in June.
Ms. Winger, excuse me, we're trying to figure out which date we're supposed to be calculating here. So are you asking, what is the second, the, the, the date for the second public hearing on the tax rate?
Yes, I am.
Okay, that's what I thought. Thank you.
Mr. Schnell, do we need to take a recess?
It probably would be a good idea to take a short recess so we can get the calendar straight.
Perfect. We'll do a tight five-minute recess. It is eight thirteen. We'll be back at eight eighteen.
Anyway, I'm glad that you're here.
Yeah, I'm gonna be all right. I think I've got a couple of things to worry about. At this age, I guess that's normal.
We'll talk. Take care.
Okay, take care.
So...
What, when are you all gonna start playing bridge again? We're never gonna come play bridge, just play a group again.
Too slow?
Just, uh, just not in the, I'm not gonna discuss it again.
All right, it is eight seventeen. If, uh, everybody can make their way back to their seat. We have one minute till we get back into it. Okay, it is eight eighteen. Uh, Mr. Rapley, do you have the, or Ms. Vigance, do you have the new dates?
I know, but...
We're back in recess. Sorry, Ms. Gonzalez, eight eighteen.
Uh, Mr. McCormick, going away from Mr. McCormick, in case we have to take a...
You wanna go ahead and get started, Mr. Rapley?
Yeah. Okay, so, again, going back to the days, the September tenth is the day we were proposed here to hold the second tax hearing. We could, the farthest we can move it is to Thursday, September twelfth, or Friday, September thirteenth. Either of those two days would be the maximum on, um, approving the second tax rate. So I would, I would recommend if it was Thursday, September twelfth, uh, that we do it at seven o'clock because we have tax, uh, we have court that day. Or Friday night, um, council can pick the time.
That's the tax rate. I wasn't asking about the tax rate. I was asking about the budget.
You asked about the tax rate.
What?
Mr. Schnell conferred with you on what you were asking.
I, I, I did state that I was talking only about the budget. I was never talking about the tax rate.
Well, we're still on the agenda item to approve the two hearings related to the tax rate first.
Okay.
That's where we're at, because we have to get those over to the tax office to be able to publish.
Again, I asked you that question, Mr. Rapley. Are we talking about the budget hearings? You said yes.
I think you asked Mr. Schnell as well. He said tax rate as well.
Okay, Ms. McLean?
That's what we've been conferring on, is the tax rate, maximum days we can do it.
Ms. McLean, go ahead.
Does this affect the August twenty-eighth day? Are we too far apart? Were those, I understood those two couldn't be closer than three days, but no farther than fourteen?
No, there's no, there's no maximum limit on those.
Thank you.
Okay, so I guess we're...
So I guess the question is, Mayor, do we want to maintain the Tuesday, September tenth second hearing of the tax rate right now because you of council have already approved the first hearing for the tax rate on that date of Wednesday, August twenty-eighth? Because you of council have already approved the first hearing for the tax rate on that date of Wednesday, August 28th. So, are you good as council with those two dates? Uh, and then we can discuss the proposed budget hearings.
Okay, so, if we have a motion to vote, we can make that motion now and then we can move forward. Ms. McLean?
I move that we accept the dates proposed of Wednesday, August 28th, and Sept- and Tuesday, September 10th, for the tax hearings.
We have a first by Ms. McLean.
Second.
A second by Ms. Winger. All in favor? Oh, is it roll call vote?
Roll call.
Uh, Mr. McCormick. Aye. Mr. Sandersen?
Aye.
Aye. Ms. McLean?
Aye.
Aye. Ms. Winger?
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Gregory?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, Mayor, and then now the item is to schedule the budget hearings.
Right.
So, right now.
Number two, correct?
Yes.
Propose and act upon scheduling the public hearings on the proposed budget for fiscal year 2020.
Currently, as it states in the budget calendar, we have, uh, we are going to publish the notification for the budget readings on Wednesday, August 28th. The first budget reading is Tuesday, September 10th, and then the second would be Tuesday, 17th of September, for the second reading of the budget.
So, so now I'm asking, how much later can we make it beyond the 17th? That was my question from the beginning.
14. Because we're, on the 17th, you're, you're also levying the tax rate and then doing the record vote to adopt the budget as well. And all we require is one budget hearing. So.
We only require one budget hearing?
So, the, the, the main rule that's in effect on this issue is that the, the state statute about adopting the budget says that the governing body has to adopt the budget at least one day before the governing body adopts its tax rate. So, if the tax rate is going to be adopted on September 17th, the last day to hold the public hearing on the budget is September 16th.
And we, and no choice on the, on the tax rate, right?
The, the tax rate's already been approved by council.
Tell me that part. That's what I was asking from the beginning. I get everything piecemeal.
Do we have a motion?
The tax rate's already approved, those dates. This is the budget. Schedule and announce. So, three to 14 days. Okay. The budget hearing.
No, the adoption of the budget.
Adoption of the budget, 24th. So, that is an option. The 24th of September would be the farthest you could push out the second reading of the budget.
September 24th?
That would be Tuesday, September 24th, as another option for the second hearing to approve the budget, adopt the ordinance, and levy the tax rate.
No, you're only gonna have one public hearing on the budget. That's gonna be on the 10th.
Yes.
You can have council discussion and action on the 10th, which could be to decide that they're gonna actually adopt the tax ra- adopt the budget.
True.
At a later date. On the 24th, you're not gonna have another public hearing. You're just having one public hearing on the budget. And then on the 24th, the council can adopt the budget and adopt a tax rate.
Yes, that is true, Mark.
Okay, so can you give us the, the dates again, Mr. Rapley?
So, again, the option is maintaining the Tuesday, September 17th, for the second reading of the budget. Or Tuesday, September 24th, uh, to adopt the budget, levy the tax rate, and do the record vote.
So, Mr. Schnall, we're, uh, we vote for the first day and then go from there?
The critical date to set, according to this agenda, is consider and act on scheduling, scheduling the public hearings on the proposed budget for fiscal year 2020. It is important to have the public hearing on the budget on a date other than the date the council is going to adopt the tax rate. That is what my opinion is of what the tax code provides. So, that's the signal I'm trying to give to the governing body, that the applicable statutes set certain rules. And the rule, as I understand it, from chapter 102 of the Local Government Code, is that the governing body needs to have a public hearing on the budget. Only one is required. And then, at the conclusion of that public hearing, take some action. That action can be to approve the budget. That action can be to announce when the budget will be considered for approval at a future meeting. Uh, it can be to amend the draft budget. Some action is supposed to be taken under section 102.007 of the Local Government Code on the budget on the date of the public hearing. So, that's what will happen, as I understand it, on September 10th. And then, the next action would be to adopt the budget and to adopt a tax rate. And if necessary, adopt an additional resolution required under chapter 102 of the Local Government Code. What, what the governing body cannot do is adopt the tax rate on the same date that it holds the public hearing on the budget. That's why it's important to set the public hearing on the budget for date X. And, and know that the tax rate's gonna be adopted on a different date after date X. So, this agenda item is to, is for the council to decide, what is the date for the public hearing on the budget?
May I offer a motion?
Yes, sir, Mr. President.
I propose that we have the, the first reading of the proposed budget on August 28th, the public hearing on September the 10th.
We already did that. We already voted for that.
We're, we're doing a motion now.
This is in relation to.
Seventeenth, uh, September, we'll have a second reading. And then on September 24th, we'll adopt the budget and the tax rate.
I'm sorry, that's what I wanted to clarify. What is the second? The tax rate is going to be heard on the 28th and the 10th, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And then, and then now we're talking about the budget, not the tax. So, the, so the budget is gonna have the first public hearing on the 17th, the one and only public hearing? Is that what we're saying now? Okay, we're not having it on the 10th. Okay. So, we're going to have the one and only public hearing on September 17th. And then we're going to adopt the budget and the tax rate on September 24th. Is that correct?
Well, you, you, you're not gonna make that decision on the tax rate tonight. You're just, because you will do that on the 10th, but if you.
I understand, but let's not, let's not go backward. I just said that. I said, we're going to, we're going to adopt the tax rate on the 10th.
No, you're not adopting.
Okay, well, we're going to have two hearings on the tax rate, the 28th and the 10th. Yes or no?
Yes, but you are not adopting the tax rate.
Okay, let's, let's dispense with that. We already voted for that.
You're not adopting the tax rate.
We're not adopting it. We're simply having hearings on the tax rate. I just said that.
Okay.
So, stop confusing the issue. Now, the budget, we're going to have one public hearing on September 17th. And then we're going to adopt the budget and the tax rate on September 24th. Is that correct?
You'll, you'll make that determination on the 10th, yes.
Okay, are those the dates we're now being given? Okay, fine. Then, then we've already voted on the dates for the tax rate. I'd like to, to vote on the budget hea- the budget hearing for September 17th and the adoption of the budget and the tax rate for September 24th.
Ms. Vigans? Ms. Vigans, can you use the mic and let, let us know what you're talking about?
What's that, Mayor? Sorry.
Ms. Vigans has some comments. Can you clarify?
So, I wanna, her dates, she can be forward-thinking that, but you're not adopting a date until the 10th? For that, that, that is where it becomes, where you scheduled the meeting to adopt a tax rate on the 10th. For three, and it has to be three to 14 days.
Ms. Winger?
Which is why the 24th is as far as you could go out for your budget, which is how we got to that date.
So, we're not adopting the tax rate on the 24th?
Yes, on the 24th. But, well, no, I don't know. You might change your mind. I, that's not what you're, it's a budget.
I understand, but whatever tax rate we adopt, we adopt on the 24th.
That's as far out as you can get.
Okay, well, I'm not talking about the rate.
Just like last year, there was an increase, and then it came back, and you all, the council, in the final adopted budget, took and maintained the current tax rate.
Yeah, we're talking about this too much. I'm simply trying to get the dates straight. So, we're agreed, we already voted for the tax rate.
Public hearings.
We're voting on the public hearing.
For the public hearing for the tax rate on August 28th and September 10th. We voted for that. Okay, now, we're voting for the budget single hearing on September 17th.
That's all you need to do.
And then we're voting for September 24th to adopt a budget and tax rate.
So, we're just voting for the September 17th date right now?
Take the word "tax rate" out. That's already been decided. You're gonna decide when to adopt the tax rate at a later date.
This is just a schedule of the budget.
Today, right now, the only item is the budget.
Okay, so take out the word "tax rate," and we're just dealing with September 17th and 24th for the budget.
Yes, just.
Very good. Thank you.
Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay, roll call. Is this what, roll call?
Please read back what we're doing.
We're voting to have one public hearing on September 17th on the budget, and then we're going to adopt the budget on September 24th.
Thank you.
Okay, roll call. Mr. McCormick?
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Sanderson?
Aye.
Aye. Ms. McLean?
Aye.
Aye. Ms. Winger?
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Gregory? Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
So, Mayor, I will modify this calendar again and send it out to, uh, the governing body. This will be included when I send and file the proposed budget with the city secretary.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Rapley. Uh, discussion and possible action on the development of the FY 2020 budget.
What? Thought we just did that.
Mr. Rapley?
Mayor, again, the, uh, the intent, when this was on the July 9th meeting, to discuss with council, um, some ideas and input for what they'd like to see, um, in the budget. And so, I can take those, and Laura, so, in crafting the proposed budget, obviously, this was supposed to be on the calendar in July 9th to give us about a month to, um, provide any input council might like to see in the budget. Um, doing to the short constraints, uh, we can have this discussion later when we discuss the budget proposed during the works, uh, during the, uh, discussions that we've now outlined for, um, hearing the budget and moving that forward. So.
Okay.
That was the intent, that, when it was on the agenda in July 9th.
Ms. McLean?
Mr. Schnall, do we need a motion to get this started, or is it just discussion for staff to put the budget together?
I think this is just discussion.
Ms. McLean?
I do have a few things that I would like staff to address in the budget for 2020. We have a need to fund Census 2020. There's been a mandate that every municipality have a line item in their budget to help fund gathering the census data for 2020. So, we need to look at that. I would like to, these are my budget priorities, Ms. Winger. I would like to see our permit clerk funded for the entire year of 2020, and our assistant finance funded for the entire year of 2020. I'd like us to add back the reserve contributions that we've been making for the fire truck that were taken out of the budget and put into the street budget last year, so that we don't end up in a shortfall when it comes time to buy a new fire truck. And I can't recall at the end of the budget season whether the reserve funding for the public work sanitation vehicle was also taken out of the budget. I just want to confirm that we are properly reserving, so that we don't get caught when we need new equipment without reserves.
We're already working on, um, Mr. Harada's replacement of the 2009 sanitation truck. That's already in motion. We're budgeting appropriately for that as well, to include in the purchase of, and that, we're gonna include it in the purchase for the new fiscal year.
Excellent. Um, there were some grant monies available from the Volkswagen settlement for money for that, too.
Thank you, Ms. McLean. Anybody else? Okay. Mr. Schnall, I don't assume we have to vote on that? Is that correct?
And that, it does say possible action, but, um, this can also be interpreted as simply directions to staff. So, vote is optional.
Mayor, part of it was, I know that, uh, during the May meeting, there was discussions of things that we'd like to see in the budget. I know Councilman Sanderson mentioned some improvements in IT, so I just want to make sure I capture, um, all the council members' thoughts and have, uh, all the input into the proposed budget.
Mr. Sanderson?
So, specifically the security cameras, updating those.
Those are already.
I believe there, you also were talking about card access, and that might be able to be funded by alternate sources, et cetera.
We're actually on the third quote right now for the card readers.
Excellent.
Okay, thank you. Moving forward, consider and act on ordinance to require the applications to Architectural Review Committee. When denied, cannot be resubmitted for a period of six months, to match the periods for resubmission on Board of Adjustments and Zoning.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to have this item pulled from the agenda.
Yes, ma'am. Ms. McLean, your reason?
That, um, one of the names on the submittal is not on council.
Mr. Schnall? What?
There, there is a name of a current member of the governing body on this item.
Okay, um, do we need to vote on that?
I'm, I'm not sure what the, the request to pull the item was based upon one of the, one of the person's names being someone who's not sitting on the, on the council at this point. So, in my opinion, since the other name is on there, that, that this item can go forward for discussion. Um, I did not see a draft ordinance in the packet that was circulated, so that it, it could be handled in a way that there can be a discussion. And without necessarily a vote, since there's no ordinance to vote on, uh, just the, the council discussion can lead staff to determine whether they should bring an ordinance back at the next meeting or not.
Okay, if council would like to have discussion, I'll take a second.
We're talking about item four?
Yes, sir. Uh, was second by Mr. Gregory, uh, Ms., Ms. Scott. Yes, ma'am?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I would like to respectfully ask.
Can you step up to the mic, please?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to respectfully ask, under resolution number R19-06-11-A passed June 11th. Under item G, it says citizens can ask to speak about certain items if the council votes and allows them to speak. And I would like to, um, ask for the council to allow me to speak on item number four, please.
So, Mr. Schnall, I'm assuming I call for a vote on that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all in favor of hearing Ms. Scott's comments? Mr. McCormick, Ms. McLean, Mr. Gregory, all for it, opposed? Uh, Mr. Sanderson and then Ms. Winger, I'm assuming you're abstaining? Okay, Ms. Scott, please. Okay, Ms. Scott, please proceed. You have three minutes.
Thank you very much. My name is Marissa Scott. I live at 207 Prince Drive. I think it's very important to look at this item and to not extend the resubmittal period to six months. Under Architectural Review, you are only looking at businesses and residences that cost over $50,000 in construction costs. So that could be a home or a business that could be in the millions of dollars that wants to come to Castle Hills. They want to build a residence. They want to bring their business here. And if you're postponing their resubmittal to ARC, say they missed a document, or they took out some trees that they wanted relooked at, instead of waiting 45 days, as it is now, to reapply, to go back to ARC, to make them wait six months seems very unfair to them, particularly when you're talking about, like I said, businesses that could be in the hundreds to millions of dollars, where they have already purchased property and/or borrowed money to do this. So I think six months is way too long to require them to wait to reapply to ARC. Forty-five days is a reasonable period to get your documentation and things in order and reapply. I think six months is quite unreasonable. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Scott. Ms. Winger?
Yes. Well, it's, it's not too hard for residents to have to wait when they have to apply to zoning and, and Board of Adjustments, so it seems fair to me.
Ms. McLean?
Zoning and Board of Adjustments are different issues.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any motions?
I move that we table this item.
We have a motion to table. Do we have a second?
Second.
A second by Mr. McCormick, all in favor of tabling? All opposed? Motion fails, uh, three to two, or two to three. Okay. Do we have any other discussion?
Yes, I'm opposed to the, to this particular proposal for a multitude of reasons. First of all, if you're a homeowner and you have purchased a piece of residential property and you intend to, to build on it, or perhaps raise an older pri- older building and put up a new one, and you submit a proposal to the Architectural Review Committee after you've already bought the land and obtained financing for your work, and you have to wait six months to resubmit, there's nothing much that can happen during that six months, because you've nothing approved, you can't even take down the old building. So I think it's, it's, it's an improper burden on landowners, homeowners, residents in particular. Less of a burden, perhaps, on commercial buildings. I love, if we ever had a commercial building and was willing to come to this insane political environment to put up a building, I'd think they're, they would have the same problems. That's to say, if they, they submit something and have to wait six months to resubmit, then you've got the problem of bridge loans and financing and, and that sort of thing. The difficulties of that would probably preclude anybody ever building a new building in, in Castle Hills if they had to wait for six months to get an Architectural Review's second opinion. I think it's unreasonable, and there's no real good reason for it, except to run businesses out of Castle Hills. And I don't think it helps the residents either, because residents that want to build an expensive home, perhaps buy two lots someplace, and try to build an expensive home on two, two lots with a larger property, would have the same kind of problem. If they look and don't get it through the first time, they know they're gonna have to wait six months to get anything done. The financial burden on residents who want to build, build new, more expensive homes is just unreasonable, just unreasonable.
Ms. McLean, and I'll get you next, Mr. Gregory.
The Architectural, Architectural Review Committee has a fundamentally different purpose than Board of Adjustments and Zoning. Zoning and Board of Adjustments are big-picture ideas that deal with bigger issues. The Architectural Review Committee deals with smaller, more personal issues, and having a shorter timeframe is a much more reasonable way to deal with these issues. It's, I agree with Mr. McCormick that it's unfair, and it puts an undue burden to wait six months, and it will be yet another way to kill economic development or new businesses coming in, to even use places we already have in existence in the city.
Mr. Gregory?
I'd like to ask a question of our city attorney, Mr. Mark. In the other cities that you were city attorney for, did they have uniform dates for all committees? Or did they make an exception for this?
I don't represent any cities that have Architectural Review Committees. The time periods that, that are in our current zoning ordinance, I think are comparable to what are in zoning ordinances in some of the cities I represent. And, so I really can't give you any information about comparable communities, about this issue.
Thanks, Winger.
Yes, one of the problems is that when there is a protest from a neighborhood, and we had one recently, when it comes to Architectural Review, for people to go, be able to go back when the whole neighborhood is against something, or a large part of the neighborhood is against something, and have to deal with it again in less than six months is onerous. That's why I proposed it.
Um, I just want to say that I think that if we're trying to send the message that we're welcoming business and people to develop in Castle Hills, we should make it easy and not have undue burden on them developing, because if they realize that they have to wait six months, they're probably gonna go somewhere else. And while I'm a big fan of Castle Hills, I, I would say that there's other places that people can go. And I'd like to make sure that we are welcoming and making it easy for people to live and build in Castle Hills.
But, but the problem is, they don't have to wait six months, Mr. Mayor. What they have to do is work with the neighborhood, so that they're not damaging the neighborhood. And when they do that, they're going to get through the first time. And the other thing that happens in Architectural Review, and we've been through this very recently and many times in the past, is that they don't have to come to a final agreement at the first meeting. They can have more than one meeting. It's not a question of that. It's a question that when you have a business that puts their foot down and says, "We don't care about the quality of, of the residential neighborhood", that's where you have a problem. And when they do that, then it comes to council, because Architectural Review, more than likely than not, is gonna rule against it. Either way, it comes to council, and it's up to council to protect the residential quality.
And I would argue that's us doing our job, and we're, we have the, the right to say no, to listen to the constituents.
Yes, and they have the right to go back, right after that. That's the problem.
Okay, Ms. McLean?
So, your opinions on this issue are supposed to be persuasive when you don't think other opinions on other issues should be persuasive, like courts and legislative things. What you're proposing is that basically we will have different Architectural Review rules that will be in different parts of the city based on what the citizens can argue with businesses coming in to get. And that does not carry out what the function of Architectural Review is. It's to create common schemes and have common ways that things are developed throughout the entire city as a whole. And what you're advocating is that, basically, it's all citizens for themselves. You go negotiate what you can with these businesses, and that's just not a way to operate.
That's not what I said.
Okay, do we have any other discussion or a motion?
Yes, I, I do.
Yes, sir, Mr. McCormick?
One of the problems, it seems to me, that we've experienced previously before council in considering matters from, from the Architectural Review Board, is that nobody seems to recognize that the real duty of the city is to protect the right, property rights of both the residents and the businesses. So money comes in and buys a piece of commercial property here. They have the right to expect to be protected by the city just as much as the residents have the right to be protected by the city on their side. What Ms. Winger is proposing is that instead of requiring both sides to go back and, and consider negotiations, we're going to put anyone who has a problem with the local neighborhood, whether it's a citizen, a resident, a resident building a new house, or whether it's a commercial property where somebody is trying to, to remodel or rebuild or reuse older property or build new ones. Those are the people who will be held over the barrel for six months to get whatever the, whatever the citizens, the residents, want to have happen. So I think it's unfair to give either side that kind of an advantage. This would preclude any business from really considering doing something in Castle Hills. I certainly wouldn't bring one here. But that's just my opinion.
Thank you, sir. Ms. McLean?
Mr. Mayor, I reurge my motion to table, as there's no ordinance to adopt.
We have a motion to table by Ms. McLean? Do we have a second?
Second.
A second by Mr. McCormick, all in favor of tabling?
Did we already voted on that?
No, we didn't.
It failed, and she just did it again. Well, she just voted, she just made that motion, so I believe, if she made the motion, we can, correct, Mr. Schnell?
The, the, the motion was made after there was discussion and had a different basis. It's a motion to table. The council has to vote on whether to adopt the motion to table. And I believe it needs a two-thirds vote.
Isn't it reconsideration, what we just voted on? And the people who can only vote for reconsideration are those who won?
If, if it had been based for the same reason, I would agree with you. This was based on something else. But, you know, if it, it needs four votes to pass, so.
Okay, so we have a motion by Ms. McLean, a second by Mr. McCormick. All in favor of tabling it? All opposed? Motion fails, two, uh, two to three, three to two.
Can I have a little discussion on this? Very brief.
By all means.
Right now, it is 45 days that citizens have right now?
I believe so.
So, that's a month and a half. I think that's enough time. It seems to me, um, yeah. All right, fine, I have, I, I'm gonna vote, okay.
Right, no discussion. Okay, do we have any other motions? Mr. Schnell, if we have no motions, does it die?
It, it is just move, you move on to the next agenda item.
Perfect. Okay, item number five, discussion and possible action on the continuation of the City of Castle Hills Passport Acceptance Office. Mr. Rappley?
Yes, Mayor. In the packet, I provided a memo that gives an update on our city's passport acceptance facility. Obviously, we had this on the council meeting on June 24th and on July 9th as well. In case anybody wanted to have the background, this was actually started late August 2018. Staff had been promoting the service through the website, reporter, and other social media. We started using the digital billboard for our space. We've had, I believe, a lot of success with the popularity of people walking in, as well as the word of mouth of people coming in and doing passports, from that standpoint. I put in here a table that shows from August 20th to December that we did 136 passports. The amount of fees collected were 4,760. In there, I, I did minus the deductions of the postage. And then what I did for figuring out a labor cost was, we don't have apples to apples, so we don't have a dedicated staff person where we can gauge that. But, for instance, I took Ms. Umer, Umer's cost per hour and broken it down, which is about, as I indicated here, roughly $7 for about every 20 minutes to process the application, shipping. So in 2018, we roughly netted about 3,700. In 2019, through the, just through the end of June, we've done 528 passports, total fees of 18,480, using the same logic with postage and putting together that labor cost related to her processing those passports and doing the postage and mailing. The time equates, averages about 20 minutes. The, the net revenue was just over 17,000 from August 2018 to June 2019. I know that council was going to review this after one year. Obviously, we didn't start till August 20th, 2018. And the first review was supposed to be by the end of June. And as indicated in the memo here, these are the numbers for processing these passports. We've, we've, most of the walk-ins are, are outside of Castle Hills. So this is largely revenue from outside the city that people walk in. There's also the global passport to start pushing us towards City Castle Hills, instead of people going downtown, as well as post offices. So I think right now, it's been pretty successful. And I'm actually putting in the revenue, as far as 30,000, from the passport for next year's budget.
So, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, so that we can discuss.
Yes, ma'am, Ms. McLean.
Don't we have to have a motion to discuss, Mr. Schnell?
No.
No, okay, thank you.
May I have a question, then?
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Winger.
So you're saying that, that the total net profit is 3,700?
As I mentioned, that would be the first year. Through the first four months and 10 days, I was coming down and breaking down the cost, which was 3,700. That's including the net of postage and the labor factor for processing a 20-minute application.
That's for 2018, correct?
2018, 3,700. And then for 19, through the months of June, I have 13,649 as the net.
Approximately $17,000 profit?
Roughly, right now.
Okay.
And then again, that's, that's averaging in. Again, we don't have a dedicated person for the passports to be able to do an apples-to-apples comparison. Right now, that Ms. Umer does the passports. Ms. Gonzalez is, is trained and will start doing passports as well. So we have two agents. And we hope at some point, maybe another employee will take on that role as well, so we can process additional passports.
Ms. McLean?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we continue the operation of the City of Castle Hills Passport Acceptance Facility and revisit it in August 2020, 2020, for the next year's budget.
We have a motion by Ms. McLean?
I'm sorry, August what?
2020, so that would be a year from now.
Second.
A second by Mr. McCormick. All in favor?
With discussion.
My discussion, please.
One line here on the fiscal impact. You say, since August 2018, the city has processed over 664 applications through June 2019. The revenue total minus the postage and labor costs is X for fiscal year 2018. For fiscal year 2019, the revenue minus the postage cost is this. What about labor?
That's equating the labor costs. What I did was, again, extrapolating the labor costs of roughly $7 per hour for every 20 minutes to process an application, shipping.
Excuse me, say that again. How many, $7 per hour?
For about 20 minutes. You take $20 an hour, that it takes about 20 minutes.
Does that include benefits?
It's real, it's, it's her hourly rage, wage that's, that's in, yes, so.
Includes, it's, it's the wage and benefits.
That's the breakdown of her hour, hourly, to do what she does right now for the city and do her additional jobs. And that $7 is what it equates to in the time to process the passport and get it out to the postage, and, and get it out to the mail.
So it's an approximation to give us a ballpark?
It's approximation, because we don't have a comparison. We don't have a dedicated person to where we can gauge if it's actually working effectively, as I said, an apple and apples comparison.
But, obviously-
This is, this is very profitable from this standpoint. I mean, I can tell you that we have a lot of people come outside of San Antonio. This is revenue that didn't exist prior to the previous budget. This is revenue that we didn't account for.
I, I understand that, and, and I, I wouldn't say that it's very profitable. It's, so far, it's certainly not losing us money, so that's a-
I think it surpassed expectations.
Can I finish?
Go ahead.
Okay. So that's a good thing, but the thing is, as you just said, you don't have a dedicated person. The minute you put a dedicated person on that, then it's a money loser. So if you, if you're thinking about doing that, I'm opposed to it.
As I indicated, it's, it's done currently by one employee. We're adding another employee to do it. And if we could, we could get a third, like we did during the months of August through December, where we had three agents processing passports, along with their daily duties.
But you're not suggesting hiring an employee just for that?
I am not suggesting hiring an employee that would be dedicated to processing passports. I am not suggesting hiring an employee that would be dedicated to processing passports. I would continue to have our employees do it in their day-to-day roles, working for the City of Castle Hills.
Thank you, Mr. Gregory.
I'll go back to my question, for fiscal year twenty-nineteen, the revenue minus the postage cost is thirteen thousand six forty-nine. Did that include labor?
Again, that's extrapolated, like I mentioned here in the passport, that it does include, let me go back to that page. Labor costs associated with each application expense totals three thousand nine hundred, excuse me, six hundred and ninety-six, bringing the net profit of thirteen thousand six forty-nine for those first six months of two thousand nineteen. So, again, that's how I've extrapolated the labor costs related to the person doing the passport.
Thank you.
And that's what the total comes out, if you average about seven dollars to process a twenty-minute application.
Mr. Sanderson, I'm sorry.
Do you have any figures on how much it costs to actually keep the doors open here, per square foot, electricity, whatever, stuff like that on a daily basis and especially during the weekends?
Well, again, that's in our, in our line items for utilities, for CPS. It's not necessarily equated into the cost. We, we budget appropriately for those line items for electricity, water, just like we do for all the departments at each one of the facilities.
Ms. McLean.
So, part of my motion addresses the concerns that Mr. McCormick and Mr. Gregory had last year when we discussed this issue of having a sunset provision to relook at it. Nothing in what I'm asking for is putting a person back in the budget for it. It's simply to continue and give us another stream, so we've got an entire year's worth of, of data for this item. As of now, the only, only publicizing that I know we've done has been the free PSAs that we get on our billboards, and we haven't even really done that that much lately. So, without having much marketing and with using resources that we're already using, that's dead space, plus a little bit of employee time, it seems to me that this is something worth looking at for another year and at least giving it an opportunity to have a year or two worth of, of track record.
Well, again, as, as I indicate in the memo here, the majority of walk-in applicants are outside the City of Castle Hills. We're receiving revenue as a result of, of this service, which has direct impact on the City Castle Hills. The option is that people could go downtown or the post office, and we're the only suburb city in this area processing passports, and I'd hate to lose that to another municipality if we did not continue this.
Thank you, Mr. Rapley, I think it's a great, it's a great service that we can offer our residents and bring people that don't live in Castle Hills into Castle Hills. And inevitably, they might stop and get something to eat, they might stop and shop. I, I don't understand why we would want to get away, get rid of something that's very little liability, whether it's financial or legal, and it's, as best as I can tell, pretty much all on the upside.
Well, again, Mayor, we budgeted twenty-one thousand for revenue this year, and so, as again, plugging in the, the, the labor and the postage, that we are at around the seventeen thousand dollar mark, we're projecting that we'll obviously surpass the twenty-one thousand in revenue by the end of the year.
If, I, I just would ask, I, I saw him.
No, please.
I saw him. I would urge council, if they're gonna say no to this, that I would encourage them to find another way to make seventeen thousand dollars to put toward the city. Mr. Sanderson.
The PSA cost, did you roll that into this, this, this valuation here?
Uh, no, because right now, we've just been doing Facebook, reporter, Nextdoor. We're using our space allocated with Clear Channel on the digital billboard space. And I can tell you, if you look back on the two thousand eighteen numbers, when in November, twenty-eight passports were issued, when we started towards the end of November, we did forty-six. And so, we've been using that allocated space for digital billboard advertisements that we have as part of our contract. So, I can tell you that a lot of people have walked in because they saw it up on the digital board on four-ten.
Ms. McLean.
That space doesn't cost us any money, that's part of our agreement with Clear Channel, so that's free advertising.
They give us a certain amount of hours per month to advertise for, and we've used for, we've done.
Don't drink and drive.
Don't drink, we, we've done some PSAs, we've done some warrants roundup, so we've utilized that space on behalf of the city services.
Ms. Winger.
My concern is, are we calculating what happens on Saturdays? And I have asked you this before, because Saturday, you're talking about a whole other ballgame. You might be talking about overtime, you might be talking about, you know, well, you are talking about putting on utilities that we wouldn't other be using in this room. And that's what I don't see calculated in here.
If you'd like, Ms. Winger, we can break down a Saturday with that utility cost per day, per month, if you'd like to roll that in there.
I'd also argue that the PSAs are also an associated cost. It, it might not be a, a value or a dollar value, but if, if it is not used for something else and used for this, then there's still a value associated with it.
Let me make a point on Saturdays, we don't do it every Saturday, it's only by reservation.
I understand that, and that's why I said that we don't, we don't know if, for example, we've talked about this before, Mr. Rapley, is that when you have somebody call in, one person calls in, as you said to me. Sometimes, the employee might not be available on Saturday, but if they are available on Saturday and they say yes to that one person, and then nobody else calls in for Saturday, then that employee is coming in because they've already made an appointment. And they're coming in and the utilities are being put on for whatever period of time, and the employee has to be paid to drive in to come here for that one appointment. So, I don't know what we're doing on Saturdays, that's the question I've been asking all along, not because I'm opposed to this as a service, but I need to know what the cost is, and that's what I'm not seeing.
Mr. Rapley, you know, Mr. Rapley.
I don't know about drilling down to an actual Saturday for our utility bill, but I know that we can probably gauge when they do, do passports on Saturdays. Before, when we did a lot of passports on Saturdays, Tina, who used to be the court clerk, was on salary, so she would work to come in and do some of those passports. We try to limit Saturdays now because Ms. Umer's an hourly.
Mr. Rapley, I would simply say that it's probably a management decision that you can schedule so that it has to be at least three, four, five, whatever it takes to become profitable, but to still offer the service.
You can't do that.
Why not?
Because that's, and that's the question that I've asked, because if you're doing it by appointment and somebody calls in and says, I would like to come in and make an appointment, they don't tell them, we'll have to let you know, because then it's not an appointment. They say yes, and then you don't know if anybody else is gonna come in, that's how I, it cannot be managed.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
The motion on the floor was to approve the continued operation of the City of Castle Hills Passport Acceptance Facility and revisit the financials in August of twenty-twenty.
All in favor? All opposed? Okay, passes three to two. Okay, we're on to item number six. Discussion and possible action on adopting ordinance number two zero one nine dash zero eight dash one three. An ordinance of the City of Castle Hills, Texas, amending the fees enacted by ordinance number two zero one seven dash zero eight dash two-two-A and adopting City of Castle Hills Fee Schedule twenty-nineteen.
I would like to table this item because I'm, I'm, you know, bringing forward for the budget, eliminating a lot of fees, so I don't think it's appropriate to pass it at this time.
Mr. Rapley, Mr. Schnell?
Oh, second.
Before we have a, a second on that, is it okay for us to table this, or is it because of law?
Mayor, our fee schedule, based upon the passage of House Bill eight fifty-two, which was passed by the legislature and, and became law in May of this year, our fee schedule for permits for residential building are now out of line with state law. State law changed, I think it was May twenty-fourth, when the governor signed this bill with an effective immediately provision that said that cities could not charge residential building permit fees based upon the value of the property or the dollar cost of the construction, which is a traditional way that cities had been doing that in, in a lot of places. So, the proposal today is simply to change that fee structure for building permits from a cost of construction or a cost of, value of property basis to a square footage basis, i- if I understand correctly. And Mr. R, Mr. Rapley, is that correct?
That's correct, Mr. Schnell.
But, if you have a motion and a, to table and a second, then the motion to table does need to be acted on, and I, I misspoke a moment ago. The vote on a motion to table is, it's required just a majority vote to table this. But again, the, the motivation for doing this was not something that the city wanted to do, if I understand correctly, but driven primarily by the stated option, legislature's adoption, the governor's signing, House Bill eight fifty-two.
Right.
Again, Mayor, as I indicated here in, in the memo and outlined our new fee structure, this is in line with other suburban cities like Chavino Park, Alamo Heights, who've all had to fall in line with a square footage formula or methodology to address residential permitting. Right now, we are just doing the minimum charges for residential permitting until this item was brought forward. This item was on the July ninth council meeting and obviously moved to today, so we've already gone thirty days.
Okay, well, we have a motion to table by Ms. Winger. Did you have a second, Mr. Sanderson?
Yes, I did.
All in favor of tabling? All opposed? Motion fails, three to two.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the fee schedule as presented by Mr. Rapley.
We have a motion to adopt by Ms. McLean, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. McCormick.
Discussion.
Discussion, Mr. Gregory.
Even the, the purpose of this primarily is to, we can always change this along the road as the year goes along, but the purpose of this is to rapidly get in line to meet the state mandates. And if we so desire somewhere down the road, a month or two or three, we can pick it apart and change it.
Councilman Gregory, you're exactly right, and as I mentioned here in the memo here, the city will have to monitor the revenue to determine any long-term impact due to the change in state law, which now does not allow ability to calculate the value for residential permitting fees. As a result, other cities have had to modify residential permit fees based on square footage. So, right now, we're just trying to stay in line with this methodology based on the current revenue we receive for residential permitting. And if we gotta look and forecast over six months and say that it's not where it used to be using the value, then we're gonna have to amend these again to make sure we're maintaining the same revenue as we have in years past for all permit fees, both residential and commercial.
Thank you.
Luckily, as, as my understanding is, that the Castle Hills benefits more obviously for commercial resident, I mean, commercial permitting. So, the impact may not be as great as other cities who have a lot of new residential permitting like Chavino Park and Alamo Heights.
So, as, as I understand it, Mr. Rapley, it's imperative that we pass this to be in compliance with the state standards?
Yes, Mayor.
Thank you, do we have any other questions? Okay, we'll call for a vote, all in favor? All opposed? Passes three to two, with Sanderson and Winger dissenting.
Thank you, Mayor.
Item number seven, discussion and possible action on appointments to the Crime Control Prevention District Board, Chief Siemens.
Good evening, council mayor, staff, citizens. I guess first we need some clarification on Ms. Gonzalez's standing with crime control. Does she, does she default to crime control without having actually been qualified for council?
Mr. Schnell.
Since she let, she was on crime control when she was elected, Mr. Schnell?
What is, what did she do? First of all, I, I, I think, chief, that this is not an agendaized item, so I would, I would say that right now, you're on item number seven, which is discussion and possible action on appointments to the Crime Control Prevention District Board.
Yes, sir.
So, is this relevant to that item?
Yes, sir, she was a sitting member and would still have a seat if, if her position now is still on crime control, as, as you would opine on it.
Would.
It'd be one less seat to fill.
Was she the council representative on crime control?
No, sir, she was a crime control member when she was elected.
Has she resigned?
I don't think we did an official resignation, just a planned appointment today for her slot and four others.
Well, if she hasn't resigned, then she remained on the crime control board.
Yes, sir, thank you, that's what I, that was the assumption that I had as well. That said, we have four appointments that need to be considered, or either reappointed, I think all four have expressed interest, or, or council's suggestions for new appointments.
Ms. Winger.
I, for new appointments, I would like to nominate Elizabeth Gonzalez and Stephen Rayner.
You're gonna make two appointments? Ms. Winger, you're gonna make two appointments?
Yes, new, new appointments, Elizabeth Gonzalez and Stephen Rayner.
Mr. What, Gregory?
It was my understanding each council member was gonna have one appointment, but I would nominate Mr. John Marr.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Do we vote on it separately?
Yeah, Mr. Schnell, can we get some guidance on that?
I think we did last time, not to trump Mr. Schnell's opinion.
We voted on them separately the last time.
Yes, sir, that's right.
It's my opinion that you can follow Chief Siemens' recommendation. As I recall, some of the previous appointments made during this council's tenure were done where each individual council member nominated someone and that, that person's nomination was voted on by the rest of the government, by the entire governing body. See no reason to change what's been done in the past.
Okay, so, Ms. Winger, who was your first one again?
Elizabeth Gonzalez.
Okay, we have Liz, Elizabeth Gonzalez, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, it's three.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
If the people recommending have qualifications, I would like to, I would like to know something about these people before we actually vote on them.
Sure.
So, it would be nice to know, you know, the two people, Ms. Winger, whoever is appointing, what their qualifications are.
Ms. Winger, can you give us a little bit of background?
I'll be happy to do that, Elizabeth Gonzalez is a sergeant in the sheriff's department. She's been rising very quickly in the department and is very highly regarded.
Okay. Yes, sir, Mr. Lopez, if you have an item to come, to speak on. You, you have to come forward and ask council if you can speak. We have Mr. Lopez, it would like to make a comment to council. All in favor of hearing from Mr. Gonz, or Mr. Lopez? All opposed?
What are we voting on right now?
Citizen speaking.
Why are we voting on that, looks to me like that's a command decision from the chair.
It, it's a, a part of the processes that we can, it's item G. Going back again, if, all in favor of hearing from Mr. Lopez? All opposed? Okay, I'm sorry, Mr. Lopez, council will not hear from you right now. Okay, so, back to Ms. Gonzalez, Elizabeth Gonzalez, all in favor?
Wait a minute, I have questions before, before we vote. I'd like to know if Ms. Gonzalez is related to, to Ms.
She lives on Twin Leaf.
Say again?
She lives on Twin Leaf, she owns a home.
Is she related to Sylvia Gonzalez?
Is that a yes?
Loud yes? One that I can hear, I can't hear what you're saying.
Well, I'm sorry, you never hear anything, yes.
Yes.
Okay, that's good to know.
Okay.
Who else do you have on your list, Mr. Siemens or Chief Siemens?
Well, of those that are, that are needing reappointment or, or do, Mr. George Booth, Mr. Glenn Cross, Mr. Tom Hurst, and Mrs. Patsy Martin, for a total of four appointments that need to be made.
Okay, so I'm gonna finish voting on Ms. Elizabeth Gonzalez where we left off, all in favor? Okay, all opposed? Dissenting votes are Mr. McCormick and Ms. McLean, Ms. Elizabeth Gonzalez is on.
I'd like to appoint George Booth.
Okay, well, I don't know if we can, because we already have three positions.
No, we haven't voted on other ones, and I haven't gotten to propose someone.
Three left.
Okay, but you made two.
Nobody should get two.
We voted on one.
We didn't vote on Stephen.
George Booth, can you tell us a little bit about his credentials as relevant?
George Booth has been on the, on the board, and he's a longtime resident since the early sixties.
Perfect, all in favor of Mr. Booth? All opposed? Mr. Booth is on, four to one.
Nominate Patsy Martin.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. McCormick?
I nominate Patsy Martin to the Crime Control District Board.
Can you tell us a little bit about her recommendation?
Patsy Martin has been on the Crime Control Board for three years now, I believe it is. And she's Castle Hills resident, longstanding, and has been active as a volunteer in the court for some time as well, and is here every day we have active court.
Thank you, Mr. McCormick, all in favor of Patsy Martin? All opposed? Ms. Martin is, does not pass, three to two.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to.
Mr. Gregory.
Reiterate it again, John Marr, has lived in the city for many years, originally from Chicago. He occasionally has been to council meetings, and he definitely is not shy to express himself on points of interest.
Okay, all in favor of Mr. Marr? All opposed? Mr. Marr passes, three to two, he's on CCPD.
Mr. Mayor.
Is, is it only three?
There are four.
One more, I'm sorry, Ms. McLean.
I would like to nominate Nick Daines to be on CCPD, he was the president of CCPD. He was the president of CCPD for numerous years, and I would like to nominate him to be back on the board.
Thank you, Ms. McLean. All in favor of Nick Daines? All opposed? Mr. Daines is not passed by three to two.
I would like to renominate Glenn Cross.
Ms. Winger, can you repeat that, please?
I'm sorry?
Can you repeat that?
I would like to renominate Glenn Cross, who is a former S.A.P.D. officer and has been serving for some years on the CCPD.
Okay, we have a nomination for Glenn Cross. All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Item number eight, discussion and possible action on ordinance number two zero one nine dash zero eight dash one three dash A. An ordinance amending section three-two dash five of chapter thirty-two of the Code of Ordinance of the City of Castle Hills to revise a time period within which solicitors or canvassers of orders for services or merchandise, or for peddlers, itinerant merchants, and transient vendors of merchandise, or distributors of advertising handbills, leaflets, or papers, may go to private residences in person.
What is the time?
Mayor, if I may be recognized?
Thank you, Mr. Schnell. Please proceed.
This item comes to the governing body because of a demand letter that I received as city attorney dated June seventeen, two thousand and nineteen, a copy of which is being provided, I think passed out just now to the governing body. This letter is from a Dallas law firm that represents a company called Moxie Pest Services Dallas LLC, and they challenged the provisions in the Castle Hills curfew, solicitation ordinance that limits the time for solicitation to be between nine AM and five PM. They provided a lengthy attachment to this letter, which I didn't want to spend the money to make copies of something that was like two hundred pages long, but it was copies of briefs and court decisions in other jurisdictions where they had successfully attacked and gotten court judgments, forcing cities to modify the times during which solicitations would be permitted. Our ordinance provides, I think, for some methods for citizens to be on a list of, "Do not solicit me." The ordinance that's before you for presentation, ordinance number two thousand and nineteen dash zero eight dash one three dash A, would bring us into compliance with the demand and with the rulings in other jurisdictions. This is not the first letter I received from this lawyer. Another city I represented got a similar letter, not the same letter, but a similar letter, about a year ago, and that city made the same decision, which was to modify its ordinance to be in compliance with the First Amendment issues raised in this letter. So, this is not something I'm happy to recommend, but I feel that, from my legal opinion, that this is something that the council should consider and act upon appropriately.
Question?
Thank you, Mr. Schnell, Ms. Winger.
What is the, what is the timeframe that they're proposing?
Nine P, nine AM to nine PM.
Well, you know, I don't know what the Supreme Court decision on this was, but I know that the legislature of the United States is currently looking at preventing robo-calls. And, you know, it seems to me that, that, you know, if they're going to prevent robo-calls, and we're going to start having people coming in and knocking on our doors and ringing our doorbells, which they will do regardless of signs, we already know that, it's extremely onerous, and I don't think we should change it. I think we should just leave it alone. What is, he just keeps writing you letters, that's it.
Well, the letter makes it clear that if the ordinance is not changed, and they have their folks come and solicit, it is likely that the city will be sued, probably in federal court, and that will be an expensive undertaking if that happens. That's just one opinion, one legal opinion. It's, you can take it or leave it.
I'll leave it.
Thank you, Mr. Schnell. Mr. McCormick, you had a comment?
I think I had a question. Mr. Schnell, I looked at the, at the proposed ordinance, and my thought would be that we could amend the proposed ordinance at section thirty-two point five, line four, where it says, "Permits prior to nine AM or after nine PM." And I would be inclined to change that to read, "Prior to nine AM or after official sunset." And the reason I say that is because his letter itself says that most of the solicitations and their successful sales occur during daylight hours, between the hours of nine AM and whenever. So, if it's daylight hours that we're concerned about, they can have daylight hours in the summertime when we have late-night daylight hours, and in the wintertime when we have short daylight hours, and that ends at six o'clock or so, I think that's appropriate. I personally do not want solicitors drapesing around the community after dark. I just don't like the idea.
Thank you, Mr. McCormick. That's a great idea. Ms. McLean, and then Mr. Gregory.
So, if you read our full statute on solicitation, it actually applies when you're canvassing for votes, when you're out campaigning, and so-
Canvassing for merchandise.
Ms. Winger?
Yes, but when you are out campaigning, if you read our ordinances, it actually could apply to you in those situations, too. So, we should not-
Ms. Winger? Ms. McLean has the floor, please.
Our ordinance said nine to five and no Sundays. I think somewhere, I don't know how I feel about the sunset thing, because that is so nebulous. I did read part of their letters, and it does concern me that this is a company that is being very forceful with this, and it's really not worth getting in another legal battle over. So, I'm inclined to go with your recommendation. Nine o'clock does seem a little bit late, but if we do have a list where people can get on it for no solicitation, then, then just get on the list for no solicitation, and that's the way to solve it, if you don't want people at your door.
Thank you, Ms. McLean. Mr. Gregory?
I just find it amusing that this lawyer is reaching to the Reconstruction Amendments and using that as one of the amendments to cite why this ordinance we have is unconstitutional. Like, that's, I thought, it's always absurd and overreaching, but people do it all the time. I think Mr. McCormick's suggestion has merit, just to simply say nine AM to sunset. And that sunset is not a nebulous term. You see it every evening in the news. Sunrise is a X, sunset is a Y. So, you know exactly what the day is. So, it's not a nebulous time. I like the idea of simply making it nine AM to sunset, and if they're dumb enough to be out there at nine o'clock with the sun the way it is now, they deserve it.
Thank you, Mr. Gregory. I'd also possibly like to explore what the repercussions are, and I realize it's not on this agenda item, but explore what the repercussions are for somebody that violates the list of people that do not want to be solicited. Mr. Schnell?
I have not looked at that aspect of the ordinance lately, so I couldn't tell you what that is, but the chief may be able to comment on that. I do think, however, that the, one of the cases, which I'm glad to provide to the council for review, is Aptiv Environmental LLC versus the town of Castle Creek, Colorado, where the attack was on an ordinance that prohibited commercial solicitation of town residents after seven PM. And the plaintiff was able to get a court order to force that city to change it to nine PM, and the opinion and order includes this statement. Following a two-day bench trial in February two thousand and eighteen, the court found in favor of Aptiv and enjoyed Castle Rock from enforcing the ordinance. Aptiv then filed an instant motion seeking award of six hundred and fifteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty-eight dollars and seventy-one cents in attorney's fees and costs pursuant to forty-two USC Section nineteen eighty-eight. Again, although I understand Mr. McCormick's suggestion and appreciate it, I am concerned that not-